All right, Councilor Hill, would you read us out of closed session, please?
Yes, ma'am. I move this council certified by a recorded vote to the best of each council member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements for the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed session or heard discussed or considered in the closed session.
Your second?
A second.
All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. So I call the regular meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Ms. Thomas, roll call, please.
Mr. Payne?
Here.
Mr. Snook?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Ms. McGill?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
All right, thank you. Next is their motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Okay. And announcements first.
Madam Mayor, if I might. Many people are aware, but probably not everybody, that former city councillor John Conover died yesterday. John was a city councillor from 1980 to 1984. My strongest memory of John as a councillor was of him saying, "This is an issue I'm willing to lose an election over." And that notion has always stuck with me, that every good politician must always have some issue that he or she is willing to lose an election over. And I don't mean an already popular position, like your motherhood or apple pie, but John took principled stands and defended them. And frankly, that's the reasons why he actually lost for the election in 1984. One position that he took that is still a challenge for us, about 1982 or 1983, we needed to replace the Ridge Street Bridge. And the VDOT would pay for the replacement because of the importance of the McIntyre Ridge Street connection, but only if we built the bridge five lanes wide. We didn't have to use five lanes on it, but we had to build it that wide. To John, it was important that the portion of Ridge Street between the bridge and the four-lane divided part of south, part south of Cherry Avenue not be four lanes, because that would bisect and essentially destroy what remained of the Ridge Street neighborhood. He noted that we already had a history of running four-lane roads through black neighborhoods like Preston Avenue, Ridge McIntyre, Fifth Street Extended, and we should not do it again, even if only for a few blocks, because he did not want Ridge McIntyre, Fifth Street Extended to be shown on maps as a four-lane cut-through to get from US 29 to I-64. That's just an example of foresight on his part and concern on his part, and particularly concern for the community and particularly for the poor. He was a creative and a quirky, sometimes thinker about important topics. I didn't always agree with him, but I always listened to him. His was a full life, a life of service to the community and to the poor. And we remember him, his wife, Virginia Dougherty, and their daughter, Joey Conover, and send them our love.
And thank you for that. And
Thank you.
Stand condolences to the family.
I should also note that he died on his running mate Bets Gleason's 96th birthday. Bets is still doing fine and just interesting, you know, history sometimes rhymes.
All right.
I have an announcement to make as well.
Okay.
RFP notice for the 2020 CDBG CV3 funding and 2021 CDBG and home funding. The City of Charlottesville will be accepting proposals for 2020 CDBG CV3 and 2021 CDBG and home beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending at 4:00 PM Eastern Standard Time on October 16th, 2020. Projects will support a viable urban community through the provision of decent housing, a suitable living environment, an economic opportunity for low and moderate income citizens, and activities that will prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus. The RFP and related documents can be found on the city's website under Housing and Redevelopment. Online application submission is required. The city will require all applicants to schedule and attend a 30-minute mandatory Zoom technical assistance session with the grants coordinator. The meeting must be held between October 1st, 2020, and October 15th, 2020, and prior to proposal submission. To schedule a technical assistance session or for questions concerning the RFP, contact Erin Attacke, Grants Coordinator, at A-T-A-K-E at charlottesville.gov or 434-970-3093.
All right, thank you. Next up, we'll have an update, a COVID-19 update from Dr. Bonds. Thank you for joining us, Dr. Bonds.
Thank you for having me. If I can share my screen, please, that would be great. All right, hopefully you all are seeing some slides here. So tonight, I'm going to just present to you some of the latest data, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. So right now, across the district, we have just under 4,000 cases of COVID-19. And I just remind everybody that these are not all active cases. This is a total number of cases that have been reported to us since the start of the pandemic. Charlottesville has 1,380. 192 people have been hospitalized in the district, and in Charlottesville, that was 31 citizens. And then we've had an unfortunate 71 fatalities in our district, and 29 of those were residents of Charlottesville. The graphs to the right of the screen show the daily case count and the cumulative cases. And you can see that in the month of July, we had an uptick in cases. And I just remind everybody that that was when Phase 3 of the Governor's Executive Order went into effect, which allowed larger gathering sizes of up to 250 individuals. So it was also peak of summer holiday season as well. And so we saw more cases than we had seen in the previous months. At the beginning of August, the City Council and the County of Albemarle put their restrictions into effect, which included more restrictive gathering sizes and universal mask wearage. And that appeared to have a positive effect with the downturn of cases. And then in September, as you can see, we've seen a pretty significant rise in cases. And I will show you just another graph in a minute that I think explains a lot of it. And you can see the same thing at the bottom here under cumulative case counts. So I had our data analyst here pull all of the data for College Day's kids, 18 to 24. And as you can see, starting in the middle of August up until today, we've had a pretty dramatic rise in the number of cases. And that corresponds to when UVA students came back to the grounds and then back to the dormitories. And when we look at where our cases report, either where they're living or their affiliation, and we do see a large number of cases from UVA students that supports this data here with the age groups. And to want to make it clear, it's not exclusively UVA students. We also see outbreaks in other businesses across our district as well as other scattered individuals. And we continue to see intermittent outbreaks at long-term care facilities. So certainly by no means only UVA students, but we are seeing a dramatic increase because of UVA students. We continue to do significant amounts of testing. In fact, we just had a regional call earlier today that I participated on. And you can see that here in Thomas Jefferson, we've done 71,000 PCR tests across the district. That is significantly more than any of the other health districts in our region, even those that have a larger population than we do. Our positivity rate is at 5.2 right now for the district. I do want to spend just a minute talking about that, because you would expect with this large numbers here that we should be seeing a greater positivity rate. And I would just remind everybody that this has two parts. It's the number of positive tests, which are certainly high right now, but it is also the total number of tests that are being done. And as you can see, looking at this, we've had a dramatic increase, well, dramatic, an increase in the number of tests. And I can just tell you, talking to the individuals over at UVA, they're testing a significant number of people, many of whom have negative tests, which is good. So UVA is doing what are called point prevalence surveys on many of their dormitories. And so that's going to drive the number of tests up. They're also doing some routine testing of individuals. And then, of course, we do a considerable amount of community testing in this area as well, most of which brings back negative results. So although we are having large numbers in our community, a positive test, a much larger number, our seven-day positivity rate remains relatively low. And if you look at the COVID-like illnesses in both the emergency department here and in the urgent care, you can see that Virginia is running at about 6% to 7%. And here in the district, we tend to be a percentage point or so below that, with some occasional blips up here in the middle of September, corresponding to when we saw a large number of positive individuals, we did see an increase here above the state average. But again, just to remind everybody that this is surveillance data when we scrape off the symptoms that are in the electronic medical record in either the emergency departments or in the urgent cares and look for a constellation of symptoms that would correspond with COVID. So kind of an early warning system, as it were. When we look at the pandemic metric map, which is now available to the public, and I can send this out to the clerk so she can release it to all of you, but it's now a public dashboard. I would just remind everybody that Charlottesville is in this northwest region here. We have moderate transmission going on in our region, but it's very fluctuating. And I would say moderate because, again, we have a large number of cases here in the Charlottesville-Albemarle area. And then in Central Shenandoah, which is the health district here to the west of us, they're also seeing a fairly large number because of primarily the student population there. So moderate fluctuating at this point in time. When you look at the locality metrics, and I've shown this to you, I think the last time I was here, these are for the City of Charlottesville. This is not yet public, but we're happy to provide this to you at any time. So this is the daily incident rate per 100,000. We are, for Charlottesville, up here in this higher rate, greater than 10. These are set by primarily CDC guidance. And again, you've seen a very steady increase over time. It has been fluctuating a little bit, but if you were to draw a line, the trend would be up. And again, as I said before, the point prevalence is pretty low for the City of Charlottesville. It's actually even lower than for the district. It's 3.9. But again, I would just remind you that a lot of that is driven by the large number of tests that are happening in our district. The other two parts to the locality page for the pandemic metric are outbreaks. We do not have any outbreaks going on right now in the City of Charlottesville, so that's good. And we don't really have much of an impact on the healthcare workers of the city. So again, that's also a positive sign. So a bit of an increase, and we're about to enter a colder season where people are going to spend less time outdoors and more time indoors. That's going to put people at a higher risk. So I just remind everybody that there are a few things that you can do to lower your risk. The first is, I would encourage people who have a smartphone to download COVID Wise. This is an app that was developed for the state of Virginia that, if you leave your Bluetooth on, essentially sort of keeps track of other phones around you that meet the close contact guidelines, that is, within six feet roughly and for the 15-minute timeframe. And then if one of those other individuals, even if it's someone that you don't know, ends up testing positive, they can download a number on their phone, which will then go out and send a message to your phone, letting you know that you were potentially in contact with someone who tested positive for COVID. So it's a really great way to get an early warning if you've been exposed to somebody who is positive for COVID-19. The app's free. It's available for both Apple and Samsung-type of phones. So you can download it at covidwise.org or your favorite app store. I put this picture here. This is from a great video that shows why we've really gone to encouraging everyone to wear masks pretty much every time you're outdoors. So they're using high-speed camera capturing aerosol droplets. And this is one of the ways that we believe COVID-19 is spread, is through aerosol droplets. So here's what happens when you sneeze and you don't have a mask on. You have aerosol droplets that spread out a large area in front of you. Here is the change in that aerosol droplets if you've got a one-layer cloth mask. And here's what happens if you have a two-layer cloth mask, which is most of the cloth masks that we're wearing these days. And you can see there's scattered light here, but in comparison to these two, it's really significantly less. And here's the surgical mask. You get a little bit of outflow at the bottom, but really hardly any droplets at all. So I think this really nicely demonstrates why we've gone to this guidance of encouraging everyone to wear masks when you're out. I like to encourage people to wear them regardless of how far they're going to be apart. Six feet is a good rule of thumb, but it's not perfect. We do know that these aerosol droplets do spread and can spread farther than six feet. Certainly, if you're outdoors, that's best. And so to the degree that it is possible, we encourage people who are going to be out to spend as much time outdoors, the air currents to spurse these aerosolized droplets and make it less likely that you're going to get an infected load of virus. So three easy ways. In addition, I didn't put a graphic up here about washing your hands, but of course, washing your hands frequently is a great way to keep yourself from getting infected. Testing is still widely available in the area. I've listed some testing events here. Every Monday at the Church of Incarnation, every Tuesday at Mountain Sign First African Baptist Church, both of those are hosted by UVA. There will be testing at the Health Department here on Rose Hill Drive on October 7th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. That's hosted by the Health District. And then UVA will be doing some testing at Mountain View Elementary School on Thursday, October 8th in the evening. So two standing testing events, every Monday and Tuesday, walk up or drive up. You don't need an appointment. And then we have scheduled events going on, both in the Charlottesville and Albemarle area and throughout the district. And if you just go to tjhd.org, there are more events that you can find there. Additionally, it's really important, particularly this year, for everyone to get a flu shot. The symptoms of flu and COVID overlap significantly, and we really need everyone to be protected against the flu. It's a very effective way of either preventing yourself from getting the flu or certainly reducing your flu symptoms. The Health Department is going to be offering free flu shots at Beaufort Middle School. I didn't put the date on here, I'm sorry, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. I think it is October 13th, but I will pull that up real quick during questions. It's available to 3+. And then, of course, our hotline number, 972-6261, can provide you with all sorts of information about testing events, free flu shots, and can answer any of your COVID-related questions. So with that, I will stop sharing, and I'll look up when that flu clinic is real quick and be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for joining us this evening, councilors. Do you have any questions at this time?
Dr. Bonds, one question I have is, do you have any sense of how much or to what extent the university students are basically infecting themselves or whether they're infecting folks out in the community? Or how's that working?
Yeah, and I would say that for the most part, what we see are students infecting other students. We have not seen a large number of cases amongst community members that we've been able to link back to students. Now, that being said, we are seeing more cases amongst individuals who work at UVA, either as faculty or over in the hospital. And so they are our community members, really, but they're also affiliated with UVA. And so I think there might be a little bit of cross-infectivity there. You know, it's really hard to say without viral typing and looking at the DNA of the virus and following that out, it's difficult to say with 100% certainty where any one person got their illness at. And sometimes we have an obvious exposure. It's a family member that you spend a lot of time with, and we know. But sometimes we see cases in a workplace. Did they get it from a coworker? Did they get it from someone who came into the workplace? Those are a little hard. So I don't want to say that there's no cross-spread between UVA and the community, but in general, what we see are cases that are, UVA will be able to link it back to other UVA cases and community cases that are frequently linked to other community cases.
I think I saw in the paper over the weekend that something like 2/3 of the cases recently have been in the 10 to 19 and 20 to 29 cohorts?
Correct. We're seeing a really large number, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to show you that 18 to 24 range, because it's not kids. It's not like 10-year-olds that we're seeing. Unfortunately, when they made those state cutoffs of 10 to 19, it includes the first year of college. So we had to go to a different data source to pull the 18 to 24 so we could show you that graph that shows the really significant uptake at this point. So, you know, if I go back to sharing this screen and show you these slides, I mean, you see here, it's all summer-long, certainly from the start of the pandemic, all through the summer, we saw very little in the 18 to 24-year-old in Charlottesville. And really, it was that mid-August where we began to see an uptick. And since we've had the students come back to our community, we've certainly seen an increase in the number of cases. Now, you know, UVA, to their credit, has been very transparent. They have a COVID tracker, which, if I can get my screen. So the UVA COVID tracker is up, and they've adjusted it, and it's got their total number of new cases, the student cases, looking at the daily average number of cases, and looking at it giving a week-by-week comparison. So I think, and they have done a lot of work. You know, we meet with them on a daily basis. I talk to them frequently. They've really put in place some pretty significant restrictions on the students to try and reduce the number of cases. They're trying to provide activities that's going to reduce the students, keep the students kind of closer to home and on campus. And they are beginning to think about the cold weather and what that's going to do to where their students go and hang out. So I think they're trying to be very proactive about it, but this is not the only university town, and it's not the only university town seeing an increase in cases amongst university students. So, you know.
Are you seeing, are you seeing much in the way of cases that are attributable to, like, elementary and high school kids?
No, but remember, most of our students are at home right now.
Right.
So we have had outbreaks in our K through 12, and I can pull that up. And I am told that the state is going to begin releasing the names of the K through 12 and childcare. So here, we're not reporting any outbreaks in the district. This is for the district, for K through 12. We have had a couple in childcare settings, daycares and things. But none here, but we also, in the district, we have two schools that are in a hybrid model right now, Louisa and Green, and everyone else is pretty much mostly virtual. They have scattered students in their classrooms.
Thank you.
Question. Do you know the extent to which the contact tracing capacity has scaled up since, you know, obviously, the very start of the pandemic, but even just over the past few months? And is that still being ramped up? Or does the Health Department feel that they're in a space where the contact tracing capacity is able to adequately, you know, trace every case or potential outbreak?
Yeah, we continue to hire. Gosh, I don't know how many we've hired. It seems like every week, there's another five investigators and/or contact tracers starting. They're all virtual. We just don't have the physical space to have that many people here, and this is a work that lends itself well to being virtual. We are well within the metrics that VDH has set up. All, easily 95-plus percent of our cases are contacted within 24 hours of us hearing about them, and similarly for contacts. Now, and just remind everybody that we don't get that result until it's uploaded into our electronic system. That's done automatically for almost all laboratory facilities. There are a few that are not, and those get sent to us manually. Additionally, we're seeing more point-of-care tests. Those would be like if you go into a doctor's office and they take a little sample of blood or a swab and run it right there in the office. Those are not uploaded to us automatically. The doctor has to call us or go to the online system at VDH. And not so much in this district, but the other district that I'm covering, we do see a backlog in those. And that's, I anticipate that that's going to be a little bit of a problem, because it's way more burden on the physician's office than the automatic upload. So we have plenty of contact investigators. Our case investigators and contact tracers will continue to hire because we do see a little bit of turnover associated with it. People get in and get trained and get going on this job and then realize that it's not really the right position for them. So we'll continue to hire.
And I'll just, really, I don't think I'm asking a question. I don't want to put you on the spot either, but if we, if you all, since you have that picture of the transmission, the aerosol transmission, that, I guess it was a video, but it's a picture on the screen, those are the Those are the type of things that I was thinking about. I got, we've been getting a lot of email messages because I posted a Facebook post about indoor dining. And in indoor dining, you are removing a mask, you're sitting down to eat, and then proximity to other people. And I've been thinking about that since very early on, when I think one of the first cases that came out of China, they thought that maybe the spread had been due to a restaurant setting. And again, what I'm just asking is that everyone just take those things into consideration of how we can still support our local businesses. But if we don't have to be physically in the restaurant. I mean, I think, of course, on even local, state, and federal level, there needs to be, you know, better public health-related ordinances and legislation. But since we're not there, I think it's up to each and every one of us to make sure that people have the best information possible. And since we don't have a lot of the facts that we would like to have surrounding whether, if you're sitting in a dining room at a restaurant, how safe you are, it's just better, in my opinion, based on the information that I choose to share to the public, just better to be safer than sorry. And so that is why I have been sharing, you know, those, you know, type of posts.
I think you bring up a really great point, Mayor Walker. In a recent CDC study, found that a very large number of the people who tested positive did report eating indoors in a restaurant. Now, that's not causal. We don't know for sure that it was because they ate indoors, but it was certainly a high correlation. Outdoors is safest, it is safer. But of course, we want all of our businesses to succeed. One of the reasons that Charlottesville is such a lovely place to live in is because there's such a vibrancy and there's so many great places to go out and eat. So to the degree that you can support businesses but eat outdoors, I think a lot of the businesses have now set up restaurants, areas that you can eat outdoors. And I think that's a really safe way to do it. In my household, we have takeout night, one night a week. I order takeout and bring it home. And we support all of our favorite restaurants that way to really continue to contribute to the community, support those businesses, but do it in a safe manner. I think the other thing that we need to be aware is it's getting colder. And so that's going to require a little more thought on how we support those businesses. But we also are coming into the holiday season, and that's a time that people want to gather together. And we need to remember that some of our family members are going to be in really high-risk groups. And that's something that we're beginning to think about at my household, is how can we do a Thanksgiving dinner that's going to be safe for family members that are in those high-risk groups? And can we do it outdoors? Is that going to be possible with the weather? You know, there's nothing nicer than a really nice crisp fall day, but sometimes it can be pretty cold in Thanksgiving time. So we're starting to put some guidance out. We certainly have put some guidance out about Halloween, which is coming out. And we'll put more as we get closer to that holiday season.
Yeah, and I think that's important, too. As of this moment, my family, we're gonna usual, I usually cook, or my mom usually cooks all the food. So we'll probably still be stuck with that task. But then do like a video conferencing with the family after they pick up the food to take back, you know, to their homes. And so, yeah, it's better to start thinking about that now instead of last minute and feeling, and that adding to the stress of the holidays to try to, you know, if families can get the plan in place. The other comment I just would like to make is in terms of UVA students. A message that I sent this morning to J.J. Davis was just asking about one of the interviews that were done over the weekend by, you know, life in quarantine of a UVA student. I think it was on NBC. But they mentioned just being transported to the hotel in a cab. So my immediate thought was, you know, what does the cab driver know about this transport? And how are we protecting them? So I just think in those conversations with the university, if we're just making sure that we're covering everybody who's involved in that situation, that would be helpful. Because I'm sure we're talking about, if we're talking about the drivers, people in pretty high-risk situations also. So after watching that, that was my first thought. And that was the question that I sent through email. And so that's a very close contact to a community member. And just making sure that that's been, you know, a part of the conversation.
That's a great point. And I will also follow up with UVA to see how they're doing that.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any other questions?
No, thank you, Dr. Bonds.
Thank you, Dr. Bonds.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good evening. Okay. And next, just a quick announcement that tomorrow we'll be having a work session at four to seven. So that's October 6, four to seven, to discuss boards and commissions. And we'll be discussion, discussing the meeting schedule, but also digging a little deeper about, you know, whether the boards and commissions are serving the current needs of the city best. So it'll be a very, hopefully, vibrant discussion. And members of the public who have interest in current boards and commissions and meeting schedules, make sure that you join us to comment during the public comment time or send emails in advance. All right, thank you. Next, we have reckon, oh, I'm sorry, any other announcements? Okay. All right, next, we have recognitions and proclamations. And our first recognition, and I'll just speak to the end of this. But on September the third at 10:00 a.m., there were two deputies in the 700 block of Prospect Avenue who courageous actions led to seven individuals being saved from a, from a burning building. And so today, we just want to honor them and give Sheriff Brown an opportunity to say a few words about these.
Yes, thank you. Also, Emily is here, Emily Plitkla is here from the Fire Department. They did the investigation on the fire, and she was able to speak with them first as they were, I guess, being treated with some issues of smoke inhalation. So I was going to have Emily just go ahead and briefly explain what was going on with the fire first.
Thanks, Sheriff Brown, thanks, Mayor Walker, and all counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to get to honor these gentlemen. One thing I just want to emphasize is that fire, the difference between how fires used to burn 20 years ago and how they burn today is so dramatically different that minutes make huge differences. And we really, if we don't get to a fire within eight minutes, we're playing catch-up. That first eight minutes is really critical. Lots of studies have been done on the new materials that furniture is made out of in our home furnishings and building construction. And so early notification is the key to success with any fire. And in this case, deputies O'Malley and Neil were driving by. And if I understand correctly, Neil was, it was his second or third day on the job. And they were, he was being trained by O'Malley. And as they were driving by, Neil saw smoke coming from the building and alerted O'Malley, who pulled over and then, you know, instructed him to call 911 and give them the information while he went in to start pulling people out and making notifications. He effectively rescued and notified everybody on the first floor of that building on, at Greenstone, Greenstone on Fifth. It was one of the structures there. And he essentially went door-to-door and knocked and sometimes had to knock pretty loud. There's some good stories there he can tell you. But he basically got all of those rooms and all those apartments on the first floor evacuated. When he tried to go back into the second floor, by that point, the smoke was already so strong that he couldn't, he couldn't really get to the top. But that's when our folks arrived. So he bought us that time and made the rescues on that first floor so that we didn't have to spend the time doing the first floor and could get to the second floor, which is where that smoke was starting to really penetrate and get at people. He did get smoke inhalation and put himself in some pretty serious danger. But I'm sure he didn't think anything of it. And I know he's, like most public safety is, says, you know, he would have done it any other day. So thank you to them. Thank you from the community. Thank you from the Fire Department for making this, the outcome of this such a, such a big difference. And thank you for the moment. Sheriff Brown?
All right. Yeah, I'm sorry, my screen's kind of changed up on me here. Yeah, it's one of the things that when we look at people that are first responders, and we all try to work together and we try to do what we can to help each other out. And often with law enforcement, we respond to a fire. The Fire Department is already there. So we show up and are often trying to help direct traffic or, you know, reroute traffic so that the Fire Department has, you know, a safe space to work in without vehicles and all going by. So it was a rare thing for the, you know, for people from law enforcement with the sheriff's office to actually be the first people there. And it's a fortunate thing they were because, again, Deputy O'Malley, you know, going in and out to get people out, and Deputy Neil joining him. It was a very important thing that they both did. So we're glad that they were there. We're glad everyone was safe, residents that were in the, in the building. I'm glad that everyone was able to get out and go on with their lives. So we're grateful for that.
And five of those, five of those individuals were small children?
Well, thank you both for sharing that. Deputy O'Malley, would you like to share a few words?
I just want to say thank you. Been kind of tough since then. That day, it was, it was kind of a spur of the moment to go in. I'll tell you a story from just about a week ago. I went over and I was driving to Prospect Street. When I got out, I looked at that apartment. There was a woman outside sitting on the stairs. The woman looked at me, and she, she took a second glance at me, and she says, "You're the deputy from the fire, aren't you?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am." At that point, she just said, "Thank you." As being in law enforcement for just about 30 years, that's probably the biggest compliment you can get is when you get a citizen that says thank you for something you did for them. And I just want to thank you all for recognizing me and Deputy Neil for something that we are doing. We're in the right place at the right time. So I just want to say thank you, and I'm honored.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And so, you know, first, I'd just like to say, you know, Sheriff Brown, you know, this is, there have been a couple of times where you and your team, and I'm glad that we were able to highlight your deputies today, but also to share with you. I think people forget, even going back to August 2017, that while there were many questions about law enforcement not taking action, you, your team was out there taking action and in keeping people, trying to keep people safe and protected. And so this is another, you know, one of those times where, you know, the sheriff doesn't, you know, office is not usually highlighted. But we clearly see today the importance of your office. And I know you all know that from the work that you do every day. But I'm so glad that the citizens of the community, that they can hear it highlighted here today. And so Ms. Thomas is going to hold up the plaques that we have for you. And so on behalf of the City of Charlottesville, we would like to present these two plaques to Deputy O'Malley and Deputy Neil. And the plaques say, on the, is written, "Because of you, seven lives continue to flourish. Thank you for your selfless action on September 3, 2020. We honor your sacrifices and appreciate your dedication to the City of Charlottesville." And we appreciate the work that you all do. And again, just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ma'am.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thank you.
Right. And you all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And next up, we have a proclamation. Domestic Balance Awareness Month 2020. All right. "So whereas the problems of domestic balance are not confined to any group or groups of people, but across all economic, racial, societal barriers, and are supported by societal indifference. And whereas the crime of domestic balance violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, with the impacts of this crime being wide-ranging. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate domestic balance on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent such violence, support victims and survivors and their families, and increase support for agencies providing services to those community members. And whereas the Shelter for Health and Emergency has led the way in the City of Charlottesville in addressing domestic balance by providing 24-hour hotline service to victims, survivors, and their families, offering support and information, and empowering survivors to chart their own course for healing. And whereas the Shelter for Health and Emergency commemorates its 41st year of providing unparalleled services to women, children, and men who have been victimized by domestic balance. Now therefore, be a resolve and recognition of the important work being done by the Shelter for Health and Emergency that I, Nakia Walker, Mayor of the City of Charlottesville, on behalf of City of Charlottesville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Domestic Balance Awareness Month and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities that are social distancing, physical distancing measures, just add that, and programs sponsored by the Shelter for Health and Emergencies, and to work towards the elimination of personal and institutional balance against women, children, and men. Sign and seal this day, the fifth day of October 2020." And is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this proclamation? Mr. Willer, no hands up?
No, Mayor Walker.
No, wherever. Okay, all right. So we'll get that delivered or mailed to the Shelter for Health and Emergencies. All right. Counselors, are there any other recognitions? No? All right.
There's this one item that you had asked about before. Is that going to be done during the response from the previous meetings for the questions that came that Mr. Plutania is here for?
Yes, he's going to do that during the city managers. Okay. Okay. And so next, we have the consent agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Agenda appropriation, fiscal year 2021. Fire Programs Aid to Locality Fund, Fire Fund, $165,628. Second reading. Appropriation, Virginia Behavioral Health Docket Grant Award, $40,000. Second reading. Appropriation, Urban and Community Forestry Grant, $20,000. Second reading. Appropriation housing opportunities for people with AIDS HIV. APWA $288,172 second reading. Appropriation Battalion Chief Vehicle Insurance reimbursement $36,649.68 first of two readings. Appropriation red light management funds for home to hope reentry services programming. $20,000 first of two readings. Appropriation Virginia Department of Social Services temporary aid to needy families grants. $257,479.76 first of two readings. Appropriation Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act Grant. $452,704 first of two readings.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Willer, is there anyone who would like to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda?
We do have some hands coming up. If you'd like to speak to council about the consent agenda. Again, this is not community matters. If you want to speak about the consent agenda, click the raise hand icon. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine to get in line. First up, we have Peter Krebs. Peter, you're on with City Council. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Council. I'm Peter Krebs. I live at 1022 Tufton Avenue. I'd like to comment on item number five, the urban and community forest grant. Trees have innumerable benefits, including stormwater absorption, air and noise pollution control, prevention of heat islands. Significant stress reduction and even traffic safety. Most fundamentally, they make the oxygen we breathe. If we are to be a healthy community worthy of our children and our elders. It is essential that we have the most complete tree coverage possible. In spite of what some of the signs say, we're not doing as well as we'd like or that we ought to. Not only are their neighborhoods that lack tree cover. And not only are insufficiently many new trees being planted. But the composition of the tree canopy is actually changing before our eyes. For example, my neighbor just lost a gigantic ash tree that was visible from like half a mile away. It was healthy except that it was infected by the Emerald Ash Borner beetle. So. There's a lot of work to do. It's essential that we have good data. And that it be in a form that can be cross referenced with the other things that we're deeply concerned about, such as unequal health outcomes, stormwater issues. Equity and the like. Fortunately, smart people put this together. And there are also smart allies like the tree stewards and the tree commissions that will help assure that the city gets the maximum value from this work. I salute the staff, you and those who helped to win this grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? Comments, counsel? All right, is there a motion?
I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McHill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, we have a. Response from interim city manager, Mr. Blair. In response to community matters from the September 21 meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Walker and counselors. Very briefly, at the last meeting, there was an inquiry about the city's climate action plan. And just wanted to let the council and public know that we will be having an item about the city's climate action plan. At the council's October 19 meeting. I also believe that Almarl County is going to be discussing their an aspect of their climate action plan this Wednesday. Speaking of this Wednesday, just to let the public know. There will be a public session to discuss the Preston Common Site Plan. And that is at 10 a.m. And you can register via webinar if you would like to be a part of that conference. Also, at the last meeting, there was an inquiry about the election and the. Inauguration and just. Just to let folks know, our critical incident management team are. It is, I'm sorry, it is. Monitoring the election and just like every other locality in America, obviously. There's election day and there's the aftermath, but we are monitoring those events and trying to. Be prepared for any contingency that occurs either on election day or after. Finally, there were questions at the last consent agenda about the drug court program. And both the Commonwealth's attorney and the public defender for the city of Charlottesville. Graciously volunteered to come tonight and to offer a. Some answers and also a presentation for some of the questions presented last week. So I will turn this over to. Mr. Platania and Ms. Murtaugh and let them address some of the things that were discussed at the last consent agenda item. On the September 21 agenda.
Good evening. So I'm Liz Murtaugh. I'm the public defender for the city of Charlottesville and Almarl County. I want to thank you all for having Mr. Platania and I here this evening. We're both very proud of our drug court, as you should be. The program has been around for over 20 years. It started with an idea by some of the local community leaders to. When they 25 years ago, really to when they saw a change in the way. Drugs were affecting the community and how it was interfacing with the criminal justice system. And those stakeholders, which included prosecutors, it defend it. It had defense attorneys involved. My office wasn't here yet when it started. It was before the Public Defender Office. Law enforcement, community members were part of it. Also, Region 10 and OAR was involved early on. Was to try to figure out a way to meet people's needs who are really having. Been struggling with addiction because they got in the same sort of cycle that if they ended up committing crimes, they were. First, they were sent to jail or punishment or some something else other than looking at treatment. So. The Drug Treatment Court really was born as a result of that. And our Drug Treatment Court is a model from across the state. We're the second drug treatment court that started in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And we've had 400 graduates of our program. We've had more than that participate, but not everybody who starts. Graduates, but but almost every single person who has participated that I've talked to. Have always found something that was helpful. Or something that they learned either about themselves, about addiction, about their families and how they fit into their family. So it was really a worthwhile. Process for them to participate and to be a part of that. And the program, though, when it was designed 25 years ago, or just almost 25 years ago. It's still the same core program, the same core value still exists, but what's happened is we've. Times have changed. We've got, you know, new models of how to deal with treatment and how to help people that we've had to incorporate. We've expanded the program itself from, I mean, initially it was just drug charges that went in. Now we have people who are charged with probation violations and also larcenies. That can be admitted into the program. So it's become a bigger, fuller, more robust program. And I just thought it was helpful for you to get a little bit of some of that background. Joe, do you want to talk about some of the detail specifics about the programming?
I do. Mayor Walker, members of City Council, Mr. Blair, good evening. Thank you for having Ms. Murtaugh and for having me. We were introduced as the public defender and the Commonwealth's Attorney for the city of Charlottesville, but we're also here as Drug Court Board members. And are speaking for the Drug Court Board. The board is made up of many different individuals. Treatment, defense, prosecution, probation, clinicians. Judge Moore, our Drug Court Judge oftentimes sits in. So it's the it's a variety of folks that. Comprise the board and, you know, I think we have a good representative group and try to get it right. I want to just briefly touch on the timeline. I was not able to attend the last city council meeting. I'm not completely conversant on some of the complaints raised, but. We are a small community and I've heard some of the things that were said. I'd like to address those before Ms. Murtaugh and I turn it over to council for questions. So sometime in January of this year, Jody Jackson, who is the Drug Court Coordinator, spoke to the CABA. Lunch Association, the Charlottesville Almarl Bar Association. And Ms. Jackson was attempting to, as the new coordinator, go out and spread information about the program. Talked to attorneys that might have clients facing addiction issues or criminal charges. And really to sort of get out and promote the program and let people practicing law in our community. Know what was out there is a resource from the treatment perspective. My understanding is Mr. Fogel approached Ms. Jackson at that luncheon meeting and had some questions about. Why the docket was a post plea, meaning you had to enter a guilty plea to enter the program. Why was it a post plea instead of a pre plea treatment docket? Ms. Jackson and Mr. Fogel, I'm pretty sure communicated his questions about that to me also directly. I'm pretty sure about that. So Ms. Jackson brought it to me. I am currently serving as the president of the Drug Court Advisory Board. And she said, you know, Mr. Fogel is asking these questions. Why are we opposed plea docket? And quite candidly, I didn't know. I didn't have an answer. It was how it was formed in 1998. I was. Not even in town back when it was formed. But I said, and I believe I said this to Mr. Fogel, I said, well, why don't we take a look at why we are a post plea docket? And we put it on the advisory board's agenda in February and in March. And we try in our local justice system, we try to be evidence based and we try and employ evidence based decision making strategies. And what that means is we try and follow the science and we try and follow best practices. We don't make it up or we don't do what one person wants. We try and study national trends and national data and again, sort of. Adjust to what's going to be most helpful in healing to the community. And Ms. Murtaugh said, times change. And let me give you an example of what I mean by us being evidence based. There's something called medically assisted treatment and we had never had that as a local drug court treatment program. We just always thought providing medical alternatives to people that struggled with. Opiate addiction. We just said, no, we go with the sobriety, complete abstinence model. But then we started as a board and as clinicians reading studies and looking at information and decided. You know, medically assisted treatment is what's best and it is evidence based and it is a best practice. And so the board was fully supportive in changing that. So when Mr. Fogel brought this up and said, why is it a post plea docket? We said, well, let's take a look at it and let's see what the answer to that question is. Maybe we shouldn't be post plea. Maybe that's not the best way to do this. So we started looking at it as a board in February and March, and I think everyone knows what happened. To the country and certainly locally in March, COVID hit. And we transitioned pretty quickly into triage mode to make sure that our participants who were struggling with. Really severe addiction issues were being kept safe. So we we transitioned to that in March and it was not really dealt with as a board. Quite candidly, there were other issues we were dealing with and that Ms. Jackson is the Drug Court Coordinator was dealing with. She did, however, follow up and we got some information in July and the people that Ms. Jackson reached out to and got information from were two individuals. Carolyn Harden, who's the chief of research and training with the National Association of Drug Court Professionals. And then Anna Powers, who's with the Virginia Supreme Court. And what we learned and what Jody reported out to the board is that. We are very intentional in our treatment court in serving high risk, high need individuals. I don't want to get into the weeds on this. If you want to ask questions, I'm happy to answer them, but if you co mingle low risk, low need with high risk, high need. You're going to damage the low risk, low need folks. So our program actually scores you on a matrix. And if you're not high risk, high need. When you're evaluated for drug court, we try and find some other diversion or some other alternative because the program is very intentionally. Tailored to high risk, high need individuals. And locally, what we found, there's not really any great empirical study saying one way is better than another way. However, Ms. Harden, again, the chief research and training, chief of research and training with the National Association of Drug Court Professionals. 80% of drug courts and treatment courts in this country, 80% are post plea. So we knew we were consistent with best practices and what most of the country was doing. And we found locally that with the post plea docket, there's the acceptance of responsibility and a desire for intensive treatment very quickly. We try and get folks in within 14 days. We've anecdotally found that. That is is a component that sort of. Leads to more success. We also, I think there's been some concern concerns raised, well, geez, you just have to go plead guilty. You don't get any discovery. You don't get a trial. You don't get to file motions. We give Ms. Murtaugh and any defense attorney, and I don't speak for Jim Hindley in Almarl County, but I know they're the same. We give full discovery. We give open file. We don't say, look, you can't see the evidence. You've got to plead. So they're able to, and Liz can follow up. I'm about to wrap up my comments, but attorneys are able to give full advice. And counsel to their clients and see all of the Commonwealth's evidence in deciding what to do. Also, if you do want to contest the case and you want a trial or you want to file motions to suppress or complain about constitutional violations. The Code of Virginia in 18.2-251 does have a mechanism whereby. You can plead not guilty in certain circumstances and have trials and contest things. And still, you know, have the benefit of a dismissal under certain circumstances. So. We always, and I thank Mr. Fogel and City Council for raising this. We always want to be looking at ways we can do things better and challenge ourselves to, if we're not doing that, make sure that. We're making sure we can answer those questions. And Liz, I don't know if you have anything to add, but I think that covers most of what I heard was raised last time and some of the concerns.
I don't have anything to add. Well, I said that I have not heard any. Any defense attorneys that felt like they were not getting their voices heard or their clients were. Not getting an opportunity to raise issues if there was a problem with the stop or a problem with the search or something of that nature. That those those can be handled by bringing that those concerns to the prosecutor ahead of time. And sometimes there's choices not to go forward with cases because there's problems. So there's. That doesn't keep you from going into drug court.
So you're saying if they, you're not, are you saying if they don't plead guilty, that doesn't prevent you from not?
What I meant is that just because if you have a, if you have. An suppression issue or Fourth Amendment issue that you want to raise, you can do that. You can still. Go forward and have your your the motion of suppress. You can try and test the evidence. Or you can choose to not do that if you want to get into treatment early. But if you want to go in treatment through the drug court, but you can still raise all of those issues. And go to trial. And as Mr. Platania was saying, under 18.2251, you can do have pre, you can do a pre conviction program. Or have the matter taken under advisement and still preserve your right to. Argue whether or not there was some illegality on the search.
And you know, I'm not a, I'm not a clinician and I want to be real careful to not speak for clinicians. But I did pull up, you know, the first step in the 12 of AA and it said, you know, I am powerless over my addiction and my life has become unmanageable. And for these high risk, high need people, after they look at the evidence against them and talk to very experienced attorneys, many at the Public Defender's Office. They are crying out for help. And they want to get it as quickly as they can. And those are the folks that we're targeting and those are the folks we're trying to serve. If there's a bad stop or there's a suppression issue, I would like to think that the local prosecutors sit down with defense attorneys and say. All right, let's take a look at it. Let's get discovery. You know, you don't want to, you know, ram through some guilty plea because someone's got a horrible addiction issue. But there's there's certainly creative ways that I think we all try and collaboratively look at to say. We're not going to punish you and withhold treatment because you have a legal defense. That's just, it's not how we do things. And maybe I'm missing a case that I haven't heard of. I don't know. I'm not saying we get it perfect all the time. But I think, you know, with over 400 graduates and participants that do well, even when they don't graduate. I I think we're we're doing pretty good and a lot of other drug. I, I think we're, we're doing pretty good. And a lot of other drug courts that are starting up, I can think of two or three recently that were starting up. They come to Charlottesville to, to sort of see how we're doing things. And I'd encourage all of you to come to a drug court graduation or a drug court session. I know Ms. Hill was at one recently, but I think you can sort of get a feel for the energy of the program and the way in which a judge interacts with folks. And it's, it's, it's meant to be a non-traditional interaction in the court system that we don't normally see. It tries to remove the adversarial nature of it with, you know, assigned drug court prosecutors and assigned drug court judges that have the motivation to really use it as a treatment, as a treatment tool and a treatment experience as opposed to, you know, a prosecution of an individual.
And so I would be, and we discussed this, uh, you know, we had a conversation about both of our thoughts surrounding this. Joe and I did after, um, I think the initial conversation at council. I think just some things that I would ask to, you know, just keep in mind while you all exploring is very rarely would individuals who know probably their only other option, because even if defense can do all of those other things, you know, that you mentioned, look at full discovery, open file, attorneys are able to give advice. Most people have had experience where those encounters have not been positive. So it's not something that they would say, oh, this would work out into my favor. So then they have a program like drug court that's saying, instead of jail time, where they ultimately are always assuming that I am going to go to jail or I'm going to go, or I'm going to do drug court. It's not usually that they are thinking that my attorney will be able to fight this and win under any usual circumstance. And so if there are in situations like this, attempting to get the feedback from the individuals who participate in a program like drug court, which in its, and of itself would be challenging because again, they wouldn't necessarily always believe that they would have the voice to control how this program looks. But that feedback and also if there are twenty percent of drug course, um, courts are, um, you know, are, are not, are pre, pre versus post plea, pre, is that what you, I think that's what you?
Yes, you, you, you got it.
Then what, um, what would that look like, you know, for Charlottesville to, to change course? And I think that's some of the, um, questions that, you know, we would probably have to be open to, um, really exploring because we don't, unless we change course, we will really not have anything to compare it to, whether that would be successful to and meet the needs in terms of people accepting responsibility. You know, for their actions, because in the end, they would have to do the same thing. They would have to go through the program. And be successful. And if they were not, you would still be able to, um, bring those charges back forth.
Well, let me, let me push back against that a little bit. The, the first thing is the, just the fact that the questions are being asked and the discussions occurring, are occurring is extremely positive. And none of us should pretend like, you know, we've got it all figured out or there's not room for improvement or we shouldn't change. That's the first thing I want to lead with. But the second thing is, again, it helped me with maybe some specifics about why changing it to something else would be better than what we're doing. But here's, here's, there's a group of people that are in drug court and they're in drug court because we expanded it to cover larceny offenses. So as a prosecutor, I'm calling victims and saying, look, I know this person stole from you. I know that they took your property. I know that they took from your business. I know that you're owed money and restitution to make you whole. But they have a horrible addiction issue and they want to enter drug court and accept responsibility for what they did and get into treatment. And as part of that, pay you the restitution that you're owed. That would be a very different conversation if we called them and said, you know, it's a pre plea system on property offenses. So I don't really know when this will be over. It could be three months, six months, twelve months, eighteen months. We might have to start over. And you're not going to get paid your restitution. That's just a much different conversation. And I just want to make sure we're being honest about what those conversations look like, just like probation violations. That is what's driving our jail population. And what we're trying to do is target high risk, high need probation violators who have letters of continued drug use, missing treatment, not keeping appointments, uh, absconding from supervision. Those, if we say to those folks, you don't really have to accept that you haven't done what a circuit court judge told you. Again, it's a different dynamic when they interact with the judge and they've come in and said, you know, we, we do accept responsibility for the choices we've made, but we want help. Again, having said that, I'll, I'll close with the, what I started with. We should always be looking at making sure we're doing what's best and evidence based and the best practice and not pretend we've got it all figured out and there's no room for improvement. Don't mistake me in saying that. I, I don't want to suggest that.
So I think it's, you know, this is a very probably small piece of this much larger conversation we're having as a community. I know I had clients who couldn't wait until the graduation drug court, um, to use again. And then there were clients who left that day thinking that they would never use again. There were people who were thankful that they were able to have a healthy pregnancy by being in drug court, but they didn't know what their long-term outcome would be because that was just too much to think about, uh, you know, because it's a day by day thought process versus a, oh, what will you think your life will be like in five or 10 years from now? So the accepting responsibility for individuals who are in those situations for a variety of reasons. And they don't walk in the door even after those guilty pleas saying that I want to change my life and I'm thankful. Hopefully through the care that is shown to them throughout and the relationships they build through those treatment, you're able to day by day get them to believe that's something they didn't even believe in after, um, they pleaded guilty and decided that they would try drug court over what for most of them would be jail. So even that day in court where they say, I want to participate in this program. Or it happens before court, but you know, when they're talking to, um, you know, the case managers, the probation officers, the police officers involved, when all of that stuff is happening. At that point, the only thing people usually know at that time is that they don't want to go back into a, to jail, which they know does not serve them well either. So that would just be my pushback there is that even in that moment of accepting responsibility, most people haven't come to the terms that we hope they arrive to at some point throughout drug court. Is that I can change my life. There are people who support me with change in my life. And that if I do this day by day thing, hopefully at some point, I will get to a point where there, I can see a future without substances. And so I would just ask again to look at that.
Now, that, that is a phenomenal point. And the number of people at their graduation that say, Judge Moore, for the six, first six months, I hated you. I didn't want to listen to you. I didn't like my case manager. I didn't want to do what they said. That you, you nailed it. There, there's a lot of that going on for, you know, three, six, nine months. And, and a light sometimes goes off and sometimes not. The other thing that's surprising and Liz can weigh in on this. The number of people that say, I'd rather just go do a couple of months in jail than go do drug court because drug court's way harder than just going to do a couple of months. We lose a lot of people because it's a very difficult program. Uh, it is. And so.
Yeah. And I appreciate the mayor, which you said too. And, um, even the people who don't actually graduate, they, they've learned something about themselves. They've learned about their family. They've learned, you know, things that they can do that they didn't know that they were able to do. And how wonderful that someone had a successful pregnancy and there was a child born healthy. And it wasn't addicted to drugs at birth. I mean, that's a great thing. And that's a good thing that our community needs to do.
I have a couple of quick questions. I guess part of the, the difficulty and for myself and thinking about it, which I'm sure is case for everyone is just, uh, the fact that the system itself is broken in so many ways. And so it seems like this is better than not being there, but it's still part of that broken system in terms of ninety-five percent of cases and in plea bargains overall, I think quarter of people with addiction have any access to any kind of treatment. And so I guess as part of that, uh, you know, like what percentage of people who enter the program fail? And is there data on of that population? How many are receiving longer sentences than they would have if they had not entered the drug court program? And again, I think, you know, it's clearly better that this exists than if it didn't exist, that if the system was the exact same way it was. But the question around pleas, I think is, is obviously how much real leverage exists for someone to say no to a plea bargain, given how the system operates, especially with how jury sentencing works in Virginia.
That's a lot to unpackage. Good, great questions. Um, jury sentencing in Virginia on simple possession, they could impose a one dollar fine. So you know, a, a simple possession carries, you know, up to 12 months in jail, a fine of up to twelve hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars or one to 10 years in prison. So and there's also a, a bill that I think is going to pass out of the special session that might remove jury sentencing if the defendants request. That some of the questions though are really good ones about, there are people that, uh, serve more time on sanctions by participating in drug court than if they had not done it. That, that is true. And that's sort of hard to make sense, except when you go to a graduation and the person's clean and sober and healthy and rejoined with family members and they've got an apartment and they've got a job. And they just look different. I mean, they just physically look different. I can't say trading liberty for that sobriety. I, I can't really go into that cost benefit analysis. It seems to be that people are happy to make it. And some of the data on recidivism, I think that we, uh, would you repeat that question once more? You were talking about people that fail and I?
Yeah. So really the, the two questions were, one, what percentage of people who enter the program fail? And then two, of that population who aren't successful, is there any data on how many of them receive longer sentences than they would have if they had not entered the program?
Liz, can I answer this and then turn it over to you? I don't have, you know, Ms. Jackson could get you the data on the graduation rates. I think what we, I think what we try and look at for success is recidivism. And we define that, I believe, as arrest within two years of graduation. The one thing I'll say, and Mr. Payne, this is totally anecdotal, unfortunately. But we see people that don't graduate and Ms. Murtaugh probably has more personal interactions with folks that say this. But when they, they don't graduate from drug court and they're removed from the program, usually they still get a pretty good benefit because the drug court judge has gotten to know them and seen some of the progress. And so it, it usually ends up being a good thing. And the judge always asks, he said, do you want someone else to sentence you? And they're almost always like, no, no, judge, I want you, Judge Moore. You know me, you know what's going on with me. I want you. But we see time and time again, people that say, I didn't graduate, but I was given some tools for my toolbox and I learned and I grew and I'm doing better. And, you know, the program just wasn't quite for me, but I really did get some good stuff. It turned me around. I'm doing well. And as a prosecutor, I count that as a win for, uh, the defendant and for the community.
I, I agree with everything you, you said, Joe, that that's what, what the feedback I get from clients. And family members too, that really recognize the change, even though they didn't, they weren't successful or they didn't grad, well, they were successful. They may not have graduated, but they are still successful. I think that's the difference. I have gone to jail when people have been locked, when they first get locked up to go interview them and talk to them about whether they want to, are interested in maybe going to drug court when I've gotten the warrant and I've seen what the charge is. They're still going through withdrawal at the jail. And it is, it's, it's the most horrible thing I've ever seen, um, how people really suffer with that. And I got to go see a, a client of mine graduate not long ago. Who I saw her in that circumstance and I was so proud of her and all the changes she made in her life. She will still have challenges. You know, you're an addict, you're an addict, you're always an addict. Um, so you have to always stay diligent. But those are some of the tools that Joe was talking about that even if you don't graduate, you can learn.
And the, the final question, um, is my understanding is there's, there's no drug courts in Virginia that are pre plea. Twenty percent of the country are pre plea. With the understanding that, you know, you're not saying definitively if it's a right, you know, it's the right or wrong direction, but what are, what would you perceive as being potential impacts of if you moved from post plea to pre de, pre plea? Would it be extending the process? An expectation that there may be fewer people who participate in the program? Just what is, what would be the potential drawback to pre deal versus post? Yeah, pre plea versus post plea.
That's an excellent question. I don't, as a prosecutor, have any sort of philosophical or substantive objections like, oh, I'd have to put my case together down the road again. I, I think it'd be a harder conversation to have with victims in larceny type cases that, you know, the person, it's a real selling point with most of the victims we deal with it. You know, they're accepting responsibility. They're going to pay restitution as part of their, as part of their participation and they're an addict. That, that usually is an easier conversation to have with victims. But that's anecdotal, Mr. Payne. I don't know that they would be like, oh no, forget it. The other thing that I don't know that I feel like a clinician would have to answer, and Ms. Murtaugh and I are not clinicians, is the value in someone, uh, this, again, we're talking about a high risk, high need population. So is there value, uh, for high risk, high need individuals sort of not coming in front of a judge being like, well, I'm going to go to group, but you know what? In group tonight, I'm going to be like, I'm, I'm not even guilty of this. I didn't do it. I haven't pled to anything. I don't know if it would impact the ability of clinicians and maybe Mayor Walker would know this. Uh, I don't, I don't know if it would impact it clinically. Again, the data that we got from Ms. Harden, who does the, the national, uh, drug court professionals, the, the chief of research and training. I think she said four communities that were, they studied pre and post plea. And there's no definitive data that one or the other is better. But she talked about, uh, that if we did have it pre plea, we'd probably have to co mingle low risk, low need with a high risk, high need. Uh, because they'd want to be in that treatment and then you have to create separate tracks and different groups and resource allocation. It'd be, it'd be a lot. We'd have to unpackage and figure out it'd be a different business model than we have, so to speak. But I don't know the answer to that. I, I can't sit here and say there's something that's just, you know, it's a, it's a gamestopper. We can't do it. I, I wouldn't say that. Uh, and maybe as a board, we continue to study it and see if there's more of a national movement away from the post plea model. Sorry, that's the best I can do. I don't know if it totally answered your question.
No, I appreciate it. And, and just finally, just comment real quick because you, you, you brought that legislation to the general assembly. I do just want to highlight that. It's a little tangential. But I think it's connected to this issue of how plea bargains operate in our system. And that Senate bill five zero zero seven, um, that would reform jury sentencing in Virginia and make it easier to not need a plea bargain and remove some of that leverage to force a plea bargain. There's a reenactment clause on that in the House that is effectively going to kill it this session. So I would just encourage everyone interested in this issue to reach out. To, to the House of Delegates and our representatives to let them know they, they would like to see that reenactment clause removed and see that passed this session. I know delegate Sally Hudson already supports that action, but I think as much awareness and pressure on that, I think, uh, could have a big impact on this issue of plea bargains, uh, within Virginia.
And I don't have, um, much to add in terms of that question. Because, you know, you really have to look at, you know, each individual case, but you know, when you're talking about what people will get in groups and say, but ideally, you don't spend a lot of time in groups discussing, because that's not what drug court is supposed to be about, discussing, um, necessarily the, um, whatever the crime was supposed to be. You're focusing on those behavioral changes that are needed to propel them into a, do you know, hopefully a different future. And addressing what they need long-term to be able to stay free of substances and how you may assist with that. And so I don't, I mean, there are people who even when they have joined, been in drug court, haven't always necessarily felt. And we, we've talked about in the past and I won't bring those up here where drug court was, you know, may have been, um, misused, um, in, in the past from professionals. And so there were people who didn't necessarily feel like they really had a choice all the time. And so even those individuals didn't spend a significant amount of time in treatment, you know, talking about in terms of, um, because you're, you know, the clinician, the therapist, they are guiding the discussions in those groups to more towards healing than any acknowledgement of, um, and when you are talking about acknowledgement of acknowledgement of, and when you are talking about acknowledgement of past or wrongdoings, it's usually associated with what they've done to themselves or family members, you know, people who are really, you know, significant, and in this case, we weren't talking about when I was there, larceny cases, you know, or things of, or of that nature. Are there any other questions? Or comments? No? Okay. Well, thank you both for joining us, and I'm sure we'll probably get some comments during the public comment section that, you know, will give us further points to ponder. So, thank you all again, and if we need to, you know, reach out for any other clarification, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having us, have a good evening.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Blair, that was the end, your final?
Yes, Mayor Walker.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have Community Matters, and we are at the targeted break. Well, we'll move into Community Matters. So, Mr. Willer, you take over from here.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. We had four people sign up in advance. I'll call on them first, you'll each get three minutes to address counsel. Others who would like to get in line, just click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine to get in line. During this part of the meeting, council will hear up to 16 people providing comments. First up is Michelle Amp, and she'll be followed by Kay Slaughter, then Roy Van Dorn. Michelle, you're on the City Council, could you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Walker and councillors, my name is Michelle Amp, I live at 214 Camilla Drive here in Charlottesville. I've been a member of the community for the past 20 years. I come before you tonight to ask the city to follow through on its commitment to develop an inclusive, equity-focused climate action plan. In addition, I urge the city to make climate action a cornerstone of the comprehensive plan and the city's strategic plan, both currently under development. As Director of Sustainability for VMDO Architects, I've experienced firsthand the powers of cities to fight climate change. Cities do not just have the power over the climate impacts of their own facilities and programs. Cities have the power to establish and enforce climate policies, incentives, and regulations that affect how and where we all build. They can encourage owners of existing buildings to invest in energy upgrades and clean power. They can create infrastructures to get people out of their cars, to protect neighborhoods from flooding, and to increase green space. They can educate the wider community about why climate action matters and how to reduce their impacts. Last but not least, they can inspire other cities to do it, too. My firm builds zero-energy public schools right here in Virginia. One night over dinner a few weeks ago, I was talking about a presentation I was about to give, on how Arlington County had gone from having no zero-energy buildings to requiring all zero-energy public buildings in just five years. My kids asked me, "Well, why aren't we doing that here in Charlottesville?" And that wasn't an easy question for me to answer, I was proud of their awareness and concerned about their future. I wish there was a good excuse, the simple answer is, "We can, we just haven't made it a priority yet." Right now, Charlottesville does not have a climate action plan. Having no plan is a plan, one that ignores the changes in heat, rainfall, and biodiversity that we're already starting to experience, and one that continues the same policies that got us where we are today. While I understand that the timeline for the development of the Climate Action Plan was impacted by the pandemic, the urgency of finalizing implementing of the plan, of tracking and reducing our emissions by annually, and of prioritizing climate action in the city's strategic plan, and the comprehensive plan cannot be overstated. The decisions we make or don't make today will be felt for generations, and especially by those most vulnerable in our community. I look forward to hearing the update on the city's Climate Action Plan progress during the October 19th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Kay Slaughter. Kay, you're on the City Council, can you hear us? Can we hear you? Can you unmute your microphone?
I just did.
There you go.
Good evening, Mayor Walker and members of council. I commend your goal of meeting the 45% carbon reduction by 2030, but that is less than 10 years away. Thus, I suggest three specifics to help you reach that goal. First, the development of a Climate Action Plan by next March 2021. Second, the integration of climate change goals into our comprehensive plan currently underway. And finally, inclusion of climate change goals and actions into your strategic plan, with recognition that these goals intersect with critical issues of racial equity and affordable housing. A recent New York Times article reported that many cities contain heat islands, often located in minority communities. Richmond, Virginia was one example, emphasizing greater heat-related illnesses. In Charlottesville, maximum building within a site often leads to removal of trees, thus increasing this heat island, as happened most recently along Garrett Street, behind ACAC, to accommodate headquarters for ironically, Apex, whose product is carbon-free solar energy. Mature street trees, which absorb carbon dioxide, reduce heat, and therefore reduce heat illnesses, should be protected as part of the city's Climate Action Plan. Down the street from Apex is Friendship Court, which could lose its street trees to bike lanes and underground utilities and redevelopment plans. In addition to carbon absorption, mature trees provide families at Friendship Court with the comfort of shade and beauty in three seasons. Families who live in affordable housing should be able to experience such beauty and comfort and be free from heat-related illnesses. We need to preserve existing trees in redevelopment and add trees within our city. However, the 2021 capital budget has wiped out funding for street trees this year. So, in addition to restoration of tree funding, climate change plans should also include use of public buildings for installation of solar panels. This was proposed more than a decade ago for the Water Street and Market Street garages by Mayor David Norris's Committee on Sustainability, on which I served. To summarize, please develop a Climate Action Plan, including a Citizens Advisory Committee, by March 2021. Request that climate change goals be integrated into the comprehensive plan, and make climate change goals part of your strategic planning process. Thank you, and I will send along a copy of the New York Times article to you, a link to it, because I think you might want to look at it before your October 19th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next up will be Roy Van Dorn, who will be followed by Cale Jaffe. Roy, you're on the City Council, can you hear us?
Okay, can you hear me fine?
We can, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Mayor. I'm Roy Van Dorn, and I live on Rugby Avenue. This year, I serve as the elected chairman of the Virginia Restaurant, Lodging, and Travel Association, the Charlottesville chapter. Today, the mayor has suggested that all restaurant close indoor dining for an indefinite period. Such action would effectively shutter and destroy the table service restaurants in the city as we know it. Today, under current rules, almost every table service restaurant is losing money. That is due to the fact that most have limited options for outdoor dining, and with a 50% cap on inside capacity, there is simply not enough patron throughput to operate in the black. A 50% capacity cap, in actuality, is more 35%, since not every fortop can be filled with four people. We urge the City Council to work with industry to address concerns about health and safety issues before attempting to shutter our industry and remove a significant portion of the tax revenue for the city. With regards to cares, the consensus of our industry leadership is that more federal relief will not be forthcoming this year. So what the city has now will have to be spent very productively. The hospitality industry is an ecosystem. There are investors, landlords, suppliers, bakers, staff, farmers, and support companies that invest and play a role. When a business fails, it closes due to debt, and that debt, most times falls on the shoulders of the entire ecosystem, too. Of particular concern is downtown in the corner. Over the years, downtown has transitioned into an entertainment destination, along with new high-tech businesses occupying the offices. Those offices are now empty with workers at home, and we all know that when the weather changes, restaurants will be forced to operate primarily indoors until March. That action will accelerate the red ink. Without restaurants as the primary, primary driver for traffic and vitality, downtown in the corner will continue to leak other businesses, and at a certain point, reach a tipping point where there is no longer, where it is no longer considered a primary destination for visitors of the community. It's kind of like Fashion Square. Why go there if most of the facility is empty and depressing? Our suggestions for the second care funding. During the first round of funding, there were more qualified applicants than it was funding. For those who did apply and were qualified, they should go to the front of the line with this round of funding. Second, Albemarle County in the last round dedicated 50% of their cares funding to support businesses in stress. The industry urges a strong round of targeted support for the hardest-hit industry, the hospitality industry, and those who are part of their ecosystem. We urge the city to adopt a plan of 50% for this round to assist hard-working, tax-paying businesses that may be one bad weekend away from bankruptcy. Thank you.
Comment, I did reference this through earlier, but I had a Facebook post, and if people would read the article versus just the, and it's in quotes, so that means that I was quoting the article, which is what I typically do. It, it says we need to ban outdoor dining immediately, we need some other restrictions as well for a few weeks. If we don't, RR, which is the reproductive rate of COVID-19, could skyrocket, and a full shutdown may become necessary. And this is, this was an article that was quoting, I had a, took a screenshot of the picture, but I think it was maybe Minnesota, where the doctor that was quoted in that article. And as we had the discussion during COVID, and I replied to some of the emails that we were receiving earlier today, part of our job is to look at the whole and to share information accordingly. And for me, since before, many people were taking this pandemic seriously because of my public health background and things that I already did on a day-to-day basis before the pandemic, I knew where we may, might end up here. And so I've been sharing information with individuals so that they can protect themselves, because truly, locally, state-level and federally, we haven't been making the best decisions. Dr. Bonds was talking earlier about some of the information that she's been receiving, and if you go, if you just Google CDC or World Health Organization, you will see a lot of feedback from them about what information they are deciding to share, what has been scientifically proven. So that means if we're talking about something like COVID-19, people have to get ill, they have to pass away before we have the data to back that up. And so I've been more on the, you know, introducing the community through Facebook, more preventative measures, so that they won't have those unnecessary and dire consequences that our state officials will only apologize for, but they won't be able to bring you or your loved ones back to life. So that was just one of the articles of many that I've been sharing since March, to just help people understand how to better care for themselves. I also understand the dilemma that the restaurant industry finds itself in. I know a lot of people who've picked up employment, driving for like DoorDash and things like that, so they are really busy, so people are buying food. And we've asked, or at least I've asked for some of those members, on how restaurants are doing in the area, that it is important. But I will always, my foundation will always be public health, and anything else we can fix, and people, even if businesses fail, they can start another business, which I know is not the goal of anybody who's put their life, I have family members who own small businesses, but what we cannot do is bring somebody back to life if they die. And so my concern will always be to try to prevent that, because we don't know, once this virus is introduced to someone, how it will affect them. And I sent the email just stating that I've encouraged people to pick up, to have, you know, have their food delivered to them. I have said, "Tip well," because if you're not sitting and, you know, getting good service and able to, you know, tip at the end of that, that you still understand during these times, if you have the means to tip, that you should do it. So I've been encouraging all those things as well.
Mayor Walker, I think the article that you're referring to, at least the one that was forwarded to me, is from Massachusetts, from Boston. The, the doctor who was writing it was talking specifically about the problem in Boston and in Massachusetts, where the rate of transmission is about 1.20 or 1.21 today, versus in Charlottesville and Albemarle and Virginia as a whole, where it's about 0.9 or so. So, but it was a very specific argument for very specifically Massachusetts and Boston's experience.
Yeah, but Lloyd, if you've been following suit, this virus and how it transmits, just like all of those students who came from around the globe, it doesn't matter if we're talking about numbers in a certain area, you can Google an article where over 239 scientists from across the globe sent a letter to the World Health Organization, telling them that they were downplaying very important, you know, information that could keep people alive. We know what's been happening at a federal level from the CDC, and this is not about location, this is about science, and the science is going to be good everywhere. And so, while, and I don't even know if our doctors would speak up locally, I know there was a change.org, and I'll see if I can find that before the end of this meeting, form going around where some of them signed on, too. So I'll see if I can find that before I share any information. But how we, we're not talking about just locally here, we're talking about indoor dining. You can go to the World Health Organization, you can Google it in a New York Times article related to COVID, Dr. Bonds just mentioned it. The transmission rate is higher than if you're out, outside. The more people that are in a room together, the more likely there is for the virus to be transmitted. You've been hearing things like super-spreader events. And so, I did not remember the exact location, couldn't pull that out, but that is almost, it's irrelevant for this conversation. It's that people will stay healthier if they stay within the unit, family unit, the individuals they live with. Once they step outside their door, we have less control over whether they remain healthy at this point, and we need to make decisions accordingly.
Mayor Walker, our next speaker is Cale Jaffe, and he'll be the fourth speaker who signed up in advance, then we'll go on to another, up to 12 speakers from the audience. Cale, you're on the City Council, go ahead.
Thank you all very much. Mayor Walker, Vice Mayor McGill, and City Council-
Mayor Walker, Vice Mayor McGill, and city councillors, thank you for providing us with this opportunity to speak. My name is Cale Jaffe, a Charlottesville resident, live on Edgewood Lane. I'm an associate professor of law at the University of Virginia, where I direct the Environmental Law and Community Engagement Clinic. And I'm speaking tonight, as others have, to encourage city council to move forward with essential next steps on the city's climate action plan. And my wife and I are raising three children here in this community, one of whom is here sitting with me to speak tonight, and I'll let her introduce herself.
My name is Caroline Jaffe, and I am in 11th grade at Charlottesville High School. And I'm also on the Charlottesville Youth Council. I was born in Charlottesville and have lived here my whole life. This is a community I care a lot about, and I'm concerned about the impact of climate change on my hometown. Scientists warn of increasingly frequent extreme storms, devastating droughts, and higher temperatures. While the greenhouse gas pollution that contributes to climate change is obviously a global problem, we cannot rely on outside leaders alone to take action. Charlottesville City needs to lead on addressing climate change and reducing our own carbon footprint. If we invest in electric vehicles, neighborhood solar energy projects, and improvements in energy efficiency, then we take away the excuses for those in Richmond and Washington who say it can't be done. The good news is that Charlottesville already did adopt a greenhouse gas reduction target in July 2019. We committed to a forty-five percent reduction in carbon pollution by 2030 and 100% carbon neutrality by 2050.
The bad news is that we have not yet adopted a climate action plan to help us achieve those targets. And the city made a promise in 2019. In 2020, we need to keep that promise. And the way we do that is develop and implement a climate action plan before the end of this year. The city had planned to begin the process of developing a plan this past spring and summer, but that was delayed because of the coronavirus pandemic. Of course, the pandemic is still here. But so are extreme fires out west, a record number of named storms in the Atlantic Ocean, and an ice sheet over Greenland that scientists tell us is now melting faster than at any time in the last 12,000 years.
We cannot wait any longer. It is essential that we convene the community engagement process on a climate action plan and get work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Tanisha Hudson, who will be followed by Sarah Santa Cruz. If you're listening via Facebook or Twitter or one of our other sites and you want to participate tonight, you can register for the Zoom webinar at charlottesville.gov/zoom. Tanisha, you're on the city council, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, Tanisha Hudson. I want to say that I do agree with the late John Conover. And one thing that Lloyd said that he stood for, and first and foremost, may he rest in peace. But certain things are not worth losing an election for, and personal issues and self-serving agendas is definitely not worth losing an election for. But we all know that this city was built on folks amassing power and utilizing connection, which involves a lot of conflict of interest and breach of contracts. The battle between legal and illegal, right and wrong, is never ending down there with this particular council. Every last one of you on council allow certain individuals to constantly speak up, defend themselves, or violate people's personal rights. With that being said, or constitutional rights, I should say. With that being said, we just witnessed that. Lloyd came back on the article about dining restaurants. And once again, the mayor just said that the article, with him pointing out the difference in the percentage rates between Charlottesville and Massachusetts was irrelevant. So I don't know what to say about y'all sitting up on council. But it's like y'all all are just completely soft. You don't step up when you need to. That, that, that is not leadership. That is not leadership. Listen, I have an issue with you guys picking and choosing who you want to allow to defend themselves and who you're not going to allow to defend themselves. Y'all was calling, texting, putting information out all through the town about certain situations that then went down city hall. People talk about everything that y'all talk about with them, whether y'all know it or not. People talk about this stuff. But yeah, and still, y'all still decide that you gonna send threats via text messages, send threats, like nobody can put this information out there. If you're not gonna do your job fair and impartial, then get off council. Because the bullying and Nakia doing, and the, the power trip that she's on. We lit Mike Signa ass up for doing that. We lit him up for doing the same thing. So if y'all wanted a puppet city manager, you should have been transparent about that when y'all was interviewing back in 2018, 2019. Poor Mr. Blair, that's the nicest man ever, but I can already see y'all gonna run over top of him. Y'all gonna run over top of him. I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense, the type of stuff y'all do. And then when people publicly lie or make somebody out to be a Unabomber and do all types of stuff. Know her police officers are parking where they shouldn't be parking. Y'all don't do nothing about that type of stuff. And let's talk about this increase or this hazard pay. That was done wrong, just like the pay increase was done wrong. But when people point out, you can't do stuff like that. Everybody want to sit back and not let this type of stuff leak out. It's no different than when the Home to Hope people, when it came out they was making eighteen dollars an hour, and the city raise was only fifteen dollars an hour, and that was a big argument downtown. Y'all just sweep certain stuff under the rug. Stop it. It's, it's too personal down there, and y'all all pushing self-serving agendas at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Council, you didn't, you let the other man go over three minutes, I'm not done.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
He went over three minutes, and I'm not done.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
It's thank you because you know I'm coming for you, Nakia, grow the fuck up.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Grow up.
Thank you, Mr. Will, you can go to the next speaker.
Mayor Walker, next up will be Sarah Santa Cruz, who will be followed by Catherine Lawson. Sarah, you're on the city council, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I am here representing the Charlottesville Food Justice Network and the International Rescue Committee. And I work with IRC as the farm and garden specialist, primarily with refugees and food access and urban agriculture here in the city limit. I'm here because I have seen firsthand the benefits that urban agriculture offers to our refugee community and to all community members who are engaged. These benefits include things like psychosocial benefits, connection to a place, especially for our refugee community, food security, an opportunity to steward the landscape, and an opportunity to build community. According to the latest 2020 predictions for Charlottesville, seventeen percent or one in six residents were food insecure. And these measurements were taken prior to where we are now with COVID and with rising unemployment. In fiscal year 2020, the Food Equity Initiative was initially approved by city council and appropriated funding through fiscal year 2021 with the adopted budget for fiscal year 2021. The Food Equity Initiative was highlighted as a priority area under the strategic plan Goal 1.5. And Goal 1 aims for an inclusive community of self-sufficient residents. And Goal 1.5 aims to intentionally address issues of race and equity. However, none of the objectives in the strategic plan explicitly mention equitable food access. We have a few additions that we would like to be included. Under Goal 1, an inclusive community of self-sufficient residents, we would like to add an intermediate measure for the number of residents receiving emergency food assistance or charitable food support in order to properly gauge financial health of residents in terms of food. As it stands, seventy-one percent of our families receive SNAP assistance. And that leaves twenty-nine percent to rely on other charitable food sources like food banks and churches. We also would like to address Goal 2, a healthy and safe city. Goal 2.1, to reduce adverse impact from sudden injury and illness and the effects of chronic disease, we would like to add an intermediate measure for the number of people affected by diet-related chronic disease in the city with the goal of decreasing that number. For 2.3, we would like to add an intermediate measure for the number of resources available to support with food access needs with the goal of increasing the amount as needed. And Goal 3, a beautiful and sustainable natural and built environment. We would like to engage more with the comprehensive plan process to integrate food justice and food access into the overall planning process to ensure food equity, food justice, climate justice, and social justice for all of our residents in Charlottesville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Catherine Lawson, followed by Chantel Bingham. Catherine, you're on the city council, you've got three minutes.
Hi, my name is Catherine Lawn. I live in the city of Charlottesville, and I am a human rights commissioner. Although I am speaking for myself and not on behalf of the commission right now, I just wanted to express my frustration at the delay in appointing new members to city council. We had some excellent applications. Those individuals have not heard back from the city. And as far as I know, the commission has not heard back from the city. And we did not have any commissioners appointed at your last meeting. So I would like to encourage you to perhaps use your work session on commissions to appoint, if that's possible, or to appoint at your next, most earliest possibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and just probably address that quickly, they, and I spoke with Chantel about this. But the council just decided that for now, that we were not going to be making additional appointments to the Human Rights Commission. And the conversation with the board chair centered around that, how the board, the commission would like those appointments to happen, you know, at this point. But explaining that, you know, council as a body had made that decision and would be having the, that, along with the larger discussion around what's next for the human rights, the Office of Human Rights and the commission wants the deputy city manager and that whole process. So we've received some feedback, and I know, at least I've had a conversation. And I think Vice Mayor McGill has had the conversation too. So if that information didn't get relayed to you all, then our apologies there. But that was the decision that we made.
And Catherine, I'm sorry, I mispronounced your last name. Next up is Chantel Bingham, who will be followed by Peter Krebs. Chantel, you're on with council.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Food Justice Network in support of the Public Health and Association of Residents. I think they just submitted a request for cares funding that you guys will discuss a little bit later today. And I just wanted to let y'all know that the Food Justice Network has been partnering with FAR even before the onset of COVID. So with the Food Equity Initiative, for example, FAR has worked in collaboration with us last year for the local food, local places, a war for technical assistance, where we had gotten federal and state agents invited to our city to really just explore, you know, what would it be like if we tackled redesigning access and prosperity within our food system, our local food system. And so that's really been an incredible opportunity for FAR and the Food Justice Network members to just dig in on what does it look like to redesign from the community member's perspective. FAR has also taken initiative to go and tour co-op grocery stores. And last October, the Food Justice Network and FAR ended up touring a co-op in Harrisonburg. In terms of like a formal partnership agreement with FAR, that doesn't currently exist. If, if folks wanting to know about that, but the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority is a formal partner of the Food Justice Network. So this past year, for example, CRHA and the Food Justice Network received that vibrant communities initiative grant from the state of Virginia for two million dollars, and we had worked together on that. Currently, FAR, not only are we doing work, you know, long-term advocacy and thinking about policies there, and how do we redesign our city for housing justice and food justice, but we're also, they're pivoting, just like every other nonprofit is pivoting, and wanting to really support their residents in a time of need with, with COVID. And I believe that their request really does define the work that we've done more recently with partnering and, and working together to support residents. I do apologize, I know that Kakidemic is our person, and so she's probably giving y'all some updates on the work that the Food Justice Network organizations have done. But as I said before, since there's not a formal partnership with FAR, though we do collaborate a lot, they may not have been in those updates that you guys have heard about in different food access organizations doing stuff right now. So this is more just for me to, to let y'all know that we've been working together and we do continue to work together. So, you know, please support that, the application when you get to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up will be Peter Krebs, who will be followed by Nancy Carpenter, and then Daniel Kaufman. Peter, you're on with council, go ahead.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Peter Krebs, and I live at 1022 Tufton in the city. I'd like to thank city staff for listening to residents and beginning a healthy streets trial on the Belmont Bridge. This is a temporary arrangement, which costs almost nothing, but creates additional sidewalk space so people may pass one another safely without having to choose between being, between proper social distance and risk injury or death by being hit by a car. As someone who walks regularly, I can assure you that this is a major improvement. I'd like to also salute the city leadership for allowing your frontline staff the latitude to try new things. In my experience, they only do so after much thought and listening, and I think this is an example of that. I've been talking for a long time about the relationship between walkability and physical safety and long-term health. Proper sidewalks have implication for the prevention of traumatic injury and chronic disease. And now, in the era of COVID-19, infectious disease as well. The Belmont Bridge is a logical place to start the trial because it meets several criteria. It's an important connection. There's a real safety issue within sufficient infrastructure. Staff do, can do this with minimal disruption, and they've done it there before. And it's part of extensive community dialogue and a larger planning effort, in this case, the bridge replacement. I hope the pilot will be extended and expanded. Some other corridors I've heard about that also meet the criteria include West Main, Preston, Franklin, Stribling, South First, as well as Broadway and Commonwealth in the county. If you do choose to extend the program, and I hope you will, please know there is significant community backing and volunteers ready to help with maintenance, as well as a good opportunity to engage with people who walk by and run those streets. Brenda and Amanda, Brendan and Amanda know where to find us. And thank you again for your service during these trying times. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is Nancy Carpenter, who will be followed by Daniel Kaufman, and then Ange Khan. Nancy, you're on the city council.
Very good, thank you, Brian, for this opportunity, and good evening, council members and Mayor Walker. I know that you'll be having a report later on in your agenda about the Home to Hope program. And I wanted to provide a little bit of my experience that I've had with working with the peer facilitators as well as, you know, their clients. It's been, I think, a very good experience being able to collaborate in my focus only, which is housing, housing justice. I know that there's a whole, you know, spectrum of services that Home to Hope has provided. And it's been rewarding. You know, it was kind of an idea that kind of made the eyebrow go up probably a year ago amongst some people, not me. But I want to see it continue. I certainly support, you know, additional funding for this very, very important initiative. very, very important initiative because, you know, I hate to pick on so, one of the council members that used the word failure a few minutes ago, but, and I appreciate the step back and changing the verbiage, but it's a lot of folks that have, you know, been in the system for a long time, even back and, you know, as little kids with IEPs and in-school suspensions and maybe being in shelters themselves or, you know, all that kind of instability, adverse childhood experiences and things like that. So I hope that you will continue to fund it. And I really would like to make a suggestion that if we're going to move forward as a community and look at ways to reallocate police sources, resources, that we look and figure out how we monetize these kinds of things that Home to Hope does that may be duplicative of some of the things that maybe the CPD does and social services construct and reallocate those funds to that program. I'd like to see it, you know, eventually in the future become a rapid response team, you know, where you not only have Home to Hope people, but you have every system represented that, that a person touches down. The other thing I want to say is that I'm really upset that I'm hearing potential fair housing issues in this community when people who are finally get their vouchers, they've waited for so long, they are now being told by a lot of these landlords that you need to have three times the rental amount as monthly income. And we know for a fact that if you qualify for a voucher, you don't have three times the income. So you're in effect targeted out of certain apartment communities or certain landlords because they don't want certain quote unquote people, you know, renting from them and they're trying to find ways to move around this. So I would hope that the Human Rights Commission might be tagged or the Office of Human Rights might be. I know that we're having, you know, just they're having discussions ongoing, but it certainly is a problem that I've seen lately more and more with folks that finally, who need it, get a voucher to supplement their housing stability and their income and they're being locked out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just very briefly, that is, that you have source of income discrimination of vouchers, I think is an important issue. For the first time beginning this July, the General Assembly passed legislation. What actually, for the first time makes that not allowed on the part of landlords. And I know I've had very, very, very informal conversations with Councilor McGill about the possibility of the Office of Human Rights or some capacity in the city looking at being able to enforce housing discrimination now that we have more power to do. And again, those conversations have been very preliminary and informal, but it's definitely something that I and I think other counselors to explore.
I also want to make sure people know that when calculating somebody's income who has a Section 8 voucher, the voucher itself can be counted towards that type of housing income. And that's, it's supposed to be counted as income just for that. So when people are going to apply, that voucher counts towards being rental income.
And it's also important to remember the conversations, most of the conversations we've had in council chambers the past, you know, since I've been at least on council. And I know former councillor Bellamy were, you know, having those same type of discussions with, you know, developers about lowering their AMI past the 80% mark. And it's really, you know, the intention most of the time to hopefully meet people just at that 80%. You know, 80% mark. So you know, I think one thing that this time would have potentially done if we had utilized it is, you know, landlords who only rent to students and individuals who are contracted through like the university for, you know, a 12-month period or one, you know, school year or whatever, that they would have had to broaden that. And that's something that because things did open back up the way they have, that, that wasn't again, like it is, you know, year after year, not a consideration. So we're in, you know, a difficult situation. Even the cost of housing outside the city limits and that a lot of the money that we are putting to these initiatives are going to housing that's in surrounding counties. And that it's a, it's a major, it's a major issue.
Mayor Walker, next up is Daniel Kaufman, who will be followed by Ange Khan and then Jeanette Abinater. Daniel, go ahead.
Mayor Walker, council members, I want to thank you for your time today and allowing us a voice to, to speak on, on some topics. I am the owner of Public Fish and Oyster at 513 West Main Street, as well as Pronto on the UVA Corner, two restaurants in Charlottesville. I opened public in 2014 with a very small inheritance following the death of my mother. And I was able to put together a lifelong dream of owning my own restaurant. I'd worked in restaurants my entire life from washing dishes to waiting tables to bartending to management. And all along, it was my dream to own my own restaurant and I was able to do so due to an unfortunate event. And in the six years we've been in existence, I'm really proud to say we've become a staple of the Charlottesville community, a community that I've really grown to love over, over the last few years. I've never felt more anxiety in my life than when I read Mayor Walker's Facebook post this morning after it was sent to me by one of my peers. It was quite frankly terrifying and it was deja vu, but worse this time. Already had to shut down the restaurant once, really took the life out of me at the time and really put me and a lot of my peers in a tough spot, had to lay off all my staff. Staff would work for me for years. And we were able to get through it. We were able to limp through it through help of the Paycheck Protection Program, which was not perfect in any way, but it was enough to get us through our takeout only scenario. I was able to bring staff back once dining was permitted and went from a staff of three remaining to a staff of 15. I rebuilt an entire staff of 15 at Public Fish and Oyster. Pronto, we were down for months and months and finally got reopened when UVA came back. I and a lot of my peers are not going to be able to keep those people employed if we lose dine-in going into the winter. Takeout is not enough. DoorDash and Grubhub, all those services that just take every penny out of you. Any bit of profit you can, you can expect is gone with those services. They keep inventory moving, but they certainly don't pay the bills. We are terrified. We cannot deal with this. We cannot survive this. And Charlottesville's personality is based so much in its dining scene. It really is a defining aspect of our community, the community that all of us really, really love. And it's terrifying to think of what's going to happen. We've lost so many good restaurants already and we're not going to have many left at the end of this. And, and I implore you, please reconsider this. A quick little anecdote, I was out of town this weekend with my family. We went to a more rural area of Tennessee for a few days and entered a number of restaurants and ended up leaving immediately. It was appalling, the steps they were taking.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to summarize Charlottesville is
Thank you.
Our restaurants are okay.
Thank you. And to anyone who wants to speak, again, we do have a second comment period at the end of, at the end of the meeting. And again, we, council isn't taking any action tonight on whether businesses are, remain, whether indoor dining remains open. Again, I shared that information on a Facebook post for individuals to be able to make decisions about how to best care for themselves because a lot of the decisions that we're making at a local, state and federal level are based on economics and not a public health platform and more public health foundation. And so again, I don't think that, and I've been sharing these type of posts since March. And so I think it's just important if people want to go back and look, again, we have to arm people with information for them to be able to make the best decision for the, their lives. And it was not anything based on a decision that council will be voting on this evening.
Next up is Ange Khan, who will be followed by Jeanette Abinater, followed by Chris Meyer. Ange, you can unmute your microphone and you're on the city council.
Awesome. Thank you, Ange Khan, resident of Charlottesville. I have a question regarding drug court. In the presentation, one of the presenters said that there were 400, 400 successful cases. And I wanted to know if that was over the 25 years. Is there someone that could speak to that?
I don't think there are that they are still on here based on the way that people enter drug court and the fact that it's a year-long program and that some people take longer than that year to complete, I would say that the answer to your question would be probably over the duration of the, but I don't know the exact.
You know, Okay, thank you. But that would mean that there are approximately 16 cases, quote unquote, successful cases per year over a 25-year period. That doesn't seem to be a successful program to me, but rather a program that is successful and railroading those who need support rather than a threat of jail time. It just seems like it's a revolving door into the system. And that's my comment. So whatever you're considering regarding drug court, I would take that into consideration. Because that does not seem successful and it just revolves our most vulnerable, once again, into an unjust system.
Just to answer the specific question, I just Googled it and I'm almost certain that's over the entire length of the program. There's a couple of articles in 2020 about their 400th graduate overall. So I think that is accurate, that it's, that's over the entire lifetime of the drug court.
Mayor Walker, Ange Khan has raised her hand again. She had a little bit of time left.
That's fine. Thank you.
So then that I would say, so then to that, I would say it doesn't seem very successful. Once again, what, and then what you want to look at are those who have not completed the program. And, and who, and, and the reason why they didn't complete the program and what the result of that was after that program, I mean, after they were removed from the program. And then also, what was the time that was given? It just, this program just seemed so unjust to me. And that's my time, I think. Or maybe I have a few more seconds, but, but yeah, that just, it doesn't seem fair to subject those that have substance use disease. It's criminalizing them is what it's doing rather than supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is Chris Meyer, who will be followed by Don Gathers. Chris, you're on the city council.
Thank you and good evening, councilors. This evening, I'm speaking as the executive director of the Local Energy Alliance Program, LEAP. LEAP delivers energy efficiency and weatherization programs to low-income and market rate residents in the city of Charlottesville. Majority of the program funding LEAP receives from the city, your taxpayer money that you are allocating is serving low-income residents below the 80% AMI. LEAP delivers a coordinated and coherent set of programs on behalf of the city's Housing and Redevelopment Office Climate Protection Program and Charlottesville Gas Utility. I sent this report up earlier and you might, you might have it in your emails. Through the above-mentioned programs, LEAP provided services to 291 households in the last fiscal year, including West Haven. For the Housing and Redevelopment Assisted Home Performance Program, we assisted 35 households. For the Climate Protection Programs, Home Energy Checkups and retrofit assistance, 163 households, including one city councillor. Charlottesville Gas Energy Efficiency Program was 41 households and plus West Haven, which was another 52 units. 35 low-income households received HVAC, water heating and other energy efficiency measures from what was called the Assistant Home Performance Program. These residents will save an average of $565 a year on their utility bills going forward. This popular program, unfortunately though, will see its funding exhausted in the, in the coming months. Average project cost for the Assistant Home Performance was around $4,500 a household. Specifically, and then kind of entertainingly, Mr. Gathers is speaking right after me, but we assisted him in his home last year. And his home is nearly 100 years old and located in the 10th and Page neighborhood. In his house's case, LEAP added insulation in the attic, connected an air duct that was disconnected, leaking hot air, cool air into the attic, sealed attic floor, installed LED light bulbs throughout the house and removed hazardous knob and tube wiring that was still in attic. The house's energy bills were lowered, house comfort improved and threat of fire decreased. So while delivering all these services to the local residents using city funding, LEAP has simultaneously leveraged an additional $114,000 for city residents from Dominion, Dominion, Virginia Powers Income and Age Qualifying Weatherization Programs. So we're trying to and finding opportunities to leverage outside money to make the best use of your city taxpayer money. In closing here, I just want to say, we do have interesting pilot program, the local foundation is helping us with to electrify homes, moving them away from fuel, oil, propane and natural gas. And we're also recently happy to say we had a very great experience with Home to Hope programming and a recent hire who's also living in the basement of our, in apartment basement of our office. So that was just an update I wanted to give you. Again, you have our full report in your email. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up will be Don Gathers. Jeanette Abinater, I did see your hand up earlier and you dropped off, but now you're back and we'll have you speak after Don Gathers. Don, you're on the city council.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, city manager Blair. Just, just want to wish you good luck in your, your most recent endeavors, sir. As, as Chris just said, yes, we did receive services here and I'm quite pleased with them. So the LEAP program is a wonderful program and I urge any and all who can take advantage of it to please do so. Wanted to speak also in regards to the, the CARES funding that's going to come up and urge you to request the, the request from, from FAR, Public Housing Association of Residents for that funding. As Ms. Bingham spoke earlier, yes, FAR is in a partnership somewhat with Food Justice Network. And they are doing an incredible amount of work that is very beneficial to our residents of public housing. They also work and do a lot of, put forth a lot of efforts in the low-income housing areas of the city. So I would just urge that you certainly do vote to appropriate that funding for FAR that has been laid out from the, excuse me, from the CARES Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our 15th speaker will be Jeanette Abinater, followed by somebody who's calling in via the telephone. Jeanette, you're on the city council. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mayor Walker, city manager, council members, this is Jeanette Abinater. I live on Brandywine Drive and I'm the executive director at Cultivate Charlottesville, which includes the work of City School Yard Garden, the Urban Agricultural Collective and the Food Justice Network. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for the breadth and commitment of your work. Today, I'm, it marks the first day of the city of Charlottesville Farm to School and Healthy Schools Week. This week was established by council in the fall of 2017 by proclamation and celebrates building healthy school foods and building the economies and connections to local farms. Since 2017, we've engaged over 300 community members and over 2,000 Charlottesville City School students to develop a five-year Since 2017, we've engaged over 300 community members and over 2,000 Charlottesville City School students to develop a five-year healthy school foods plan. This has all been in partnership with the Charlottesville City Schools Nutrition Department. And we are currently receiving funding to implement this plan at both the local, state, and federal levels. It includes five core strategies. Equity through access, which employs increasing student participation in the meal program, staff and equipment capacity upgrades. For example, we'll be purchasing a new oven for the Johnson School as well as this summer we purchased coolers for you know, delivery of foods, increasing fresh and scratch local food in the meals, student voice and choice, ensuring that the program is supported by youth, and then youth nutrition education. Of course, this year we've had to modify our actions in response to COVID, but we're excited to have the ability to continue to move forward. And so we have a lot of events going on this week. We've launched videos just today that tour each of the schoolyard and urban farm gardens. On Thursday, all Charlottesville City School students' meals will include fresh collards for the harvest of the month. And we're working with the Charlottesville City Nutrition Department to have a from-scratch meal on Friday that will be delivered to students that will include local foods. And then we're also hosting animals in the garden, chickens in the garden with the after-school clubs that we're doing with our partners at Mickey Drive and Friendship Court. So just wanted to celebrate Farm to School. Thank you all for supporting that initiative. I'll add a second comment that in addition to celebrating Farm to School, I wanted to echo support for FAR's request for the CARES funding as we will continue to coordinate on building food equity practices at the intersection of affordable housing and food justice. And I wanted to add that in spite of the flush of emergency food support, there are not enough food opportunities to actually meet the needs and FAR is filling an important role because their model, different from many others, is self-determined. So residents get to pick the meals and use the cards. And so that's really important. So thank you so much for the breadth of your work and for giving me an opportunity to share my opinions.
Thank you.
And Mayor Walker, our last speaker is joining us via telephone. If you can hear us, please tell us your name and your place of residence.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. This is Carol Thorpe. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm calling with regards to the recent settlement by the city of Charlottesville to Tanisha Hudson. It was reported widely in the media that an official apology was issued to her. This was in regards to a Zoom meeting that she attended wherein she was not permitted to speak. I won't go into the details of that situation because that was widely reported. However, in addition, with that settlement to the public apology, it turns out that a apparently a cash settlement was also involved and awarded to Ms. Hudson. As a taxpayer, I'm conflicted because on the one hand, obviously, I don't like to see the money go out for that sort of purpose. But I also recognize that when our rights are violated, as I believe they were in Ms. Hudson's situation, that she has the, she has the right to to seek compensation for such. And so kudos to her for getting satisfaction. On the other hand, the most disturbing portion of this and the reason for my call is that while the written, the written apology was widely reported, nowhere was it reported in local media that in addition, as part of that settlement that she received, this this cash payout. The only reason it came to the fore that I'm aware of is because her attorney had released that information in a press release. He had written that the initial request, along with the written apology, was a request for $400,000. And while in that press release, he said that they did not receive that full amount, he did state that they were, quote, "very, very satisfied with the settlement." So we're left to wonder how much money Ms. Hudson received. And I'm not calling to request that amount certainly because I'm sure that was part of the confidential settlement. But what disturbs me is that unless he had written that in the press release, the taxpayers of the city of Charlottesville and also Almarle County, who pay into the city of Charlottesville by the revenue sharing agreement, would have never known about this settlement, would have never known that their taxpayer dollars went out to to Ms. Hudson for this purpose. And so why is it that you felt, because I can think there's the only reason why you wouldn't say so, that you you could get away with not mentioning that in addition to this written public apology, that no money was paid out? And that's disturbing. I thought that we were going to be Mayor Walker, unmasking the illusion of city government, that you were going to be bringing a more transparent government to the city of Charlottesville. And I believe that the the taxpayers and the citizens of Charlottesville should know, even though it would leave a little egg on your face, that that this payment would have gone out with the written apology. I ask that you please do better. Thank you.
And so Ms. Robertson, if you have any questions, any statements related to that, if you don't, then that's fine. I mean, I'll just again speak on my end. Since I have been on council, I have allowed anyone to speak for as long as sometimes criticized for the amount of time that people are able to speak. I haven't in any situation ever violated anyone's First Amendment right. I don't plan on doing it. And as I've stated initially, while I am not one to have to apologize here because I didn't do anything, I do feel like when we make mistakes, we do have to own it and move forward, moving forward, not do it again. I have been a member of the black community in Charlottesville and I've had my voice censored and silenced for a lot of years and it was, it is not something that I would ever condone. And I have made that statement. So there is nothing about this situation that will leave me with egg on my face in situations when we are wrong and we need to make amends for that wrong. And I'm using "we" very loosely in this case. Because even when there were people in council chambers that other people didn't think should have the ability to speak, that I made sure that they received their time.
I'd like to also add, Mayor Walker, that sometime, sometimes it can be difficult for members of the public to sort of know how things work. And sometimes when someone asserts a claim against the city, the city's insurer will handle that claim. So one thing that should be noted is that the city's press release accurately described the actions taken by the city in relation to that particular incident. But if there was some monetary compensation, that was something that's between Ms. Hudson and her legal counsel and the insurance company. And so the the only actions that were required or performed by the city were disclosed within the the press release accurately.
All right. Thank you.
That concludes Community Matters.
All right. So it's 9:10 and we will take a 15-minute break. So we'll return at 9:25. Thank you all.
What football team won?
You referring to yesterday?
Yes, did your son's team win?
Ah, they did not, in fact.
Sorry.
He, for whatever reason, mom and dad aren't fans, but uh he likes the Cowboys.
So did my daughter. I don't know where she got it from. I mean, I always say I'll watch the Super Bowl and the Detroit Tigers are playing in it.
It's Tigers Orioles Super Bowls.
See, at least you go with it. I do not know how many people sit down. Well, Cena, you know that the Detroit Tigers are a baseball team. Like, yeah, that's my point. I'm quite aware. No, for some reason, my daughter is also a Cowboys fan. I I don't even, we don't watch football in the house. I don't know how that happened.
So instead of uh, about those Cowboys, how about those counselors?
What a bomb. Let me do a yard pass. I don't know what that is.
Maybe we could have a flag football team.
I'm the P, I'm one of the people who just tackles people then.
I mean, they've got a congressional baseball game, so.
All right. This is very interesting conversation, but I call.
I know how to play rugby.
All right, and um, what do we have up next? Next, um, we have the coronavirus aid relief and economic security cares act funding, um, second reading.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Um, as you know, last Tuesday, the council had its first reading of this appropriation. Just to recap, um, there were three criteria that I went over then and I will go over now for the public. Um, concerning CARES Act dollars in this second allocation of 4.1 million, and that is that the expenses must be related to COVID mitigation. They also could not have been, could not have been budgeted, the expenses could not have been budgeted for in the localities budget that was effective for March 27 of 2020. And also that the funds have to be expended between March 1st of 2020 and December 31st of 2020. Um, as you may recall, there were some questions that Mayor Walker posed at the end of that uh, reading at uh, on last Tuesday. Um, Mr. Cullinan has some of those answers. Uh, Ms. Shelton also has some answers about the employee support component of Mayor Walker's questions. Um, it's also, uh, Mr. Cullinan and Ms. Dimick have worked on something based on a request from Mayor Walker um, that I think they will address tonight. And uh, it's also worth noting, I know that um, during Community Matters, there was a lot of uh comments about FARS requests and and obviously the councils received that, so we are uh, prepared obviously to look at amending any, any of the appropriation tonight, if if that's the council's desire and the funds are available. So with that, um, I will turn it over to uh, Mr. Cullinan and then uh, Ms. Shelton. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, just wanted to follow up on, uh, as Mr. Blair mentioned, a few of the questions arising from our, our, the last time we met. Uh, one question was the uh, amount of the outstanding balances from round one. Uh, overall, as of uh, the end of September, we had allocated about 90% of the first allocation. Um, most of that uh, remaining balance is in the technology uh, category. Um, Mr. Sunny Wang, our IT director and our staff lead on that, um, on that funding category is on the call, I believe. Uh, if you have any specific questions about that, but uh, in my discussions with Mr. Uh, Mr. Wang, those uh, those, those, they expend, they expect to uh, spend those funds here in the next uh, few weeks. Um, obviously, there are some uh, supply chain challenges for certain items. And then just the, I think the nature of some of the other projects they're looking at, just it takes some time to uh, make sure we're procuring exactly what we need um, uh, to meet uh, to meet the city's uh, technology needs related to COVID. Um, uh, Madam Mayor also asked a question about uh, individual assistance, whether that was an allowable uh, expense, and it is under the guidance provided by uh, the US Treasury. I won't go into it word for word at this point unless a, a more specific question or concern uh, comes up. And then as Mr. Blair mentioned, uh, Ms. Dimick and I have um, received a couple of different uh, requests for us to look at from both a policy perspective, a COVID response perspective, as well as eligibility for cares. Um, I will defer on that for the time being. Uh, we'll probably have, we'll get to a point where we'll have the opportunity for some possible amendments uh, to the appropriation. We can sort of click through those uh, at that point uh, during our time together this evening. And unless there are any questions, that sort of concludes a couple of the other items I was asked to look into. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So just one clarifying question for me, the 10% that's remaining, is that all tech or is that tech and then?
Uh, it's mostly tech, so the dollar amount, just to give you some perspective, there's about $416,000 uh, overall, uh, from the first allocation, the technology piece is about approximately 269,000 of that. Um, there's a little bit of money in sort of spread around some of the other um, some of the other funding categories, but in total, it's about 90% allocated at this point.
Thank you.
And two questions, one of the unallocated money from the first round. Is any of that from the contingency fund or is that just from the, the?
Uh, that does include the contingency. There's about $56,000 uh, unallocated from the contingency at this point.
And a second question is, we had a lot of public comment tonight about FARS request. Um, but via email, we also did get a, get a second separate request from um, CRHA about, um, I think the request was $80,000 for um.
Back rent.
Right, rent support and paying off past due rent. Um, and I know that request came in, at least first we saw it was emailed today, so I know that's not much time to be able to evaluate it. Um, so with that in mind, is there any idea or or uh, context known at this point about whether that qualifies under the requirements of the CARES Act?
Um, the FAR request uh, does, uh, as that's related to nutrition support to enable compliance with COVID-19 public health precautions. And uh, we've done some other nutrition support through other agencies in the first round of funding. Uh, the CRHA uh, request um, is a little, could potentially be a little more uh, complicated. Um, and you're right, I haven't had a chance to really dig into it. And and what, what makes it potentially a little bit complicated, uh, Mr. Dimick and I had a chance to speak briefly about it is um, housing assistance itself is a la, is an allowable use. Where it could potentially get a little tricky and we just want to make sure we do our homework is anytime you might have multiple pots of federal money involved. Um, there could be some restrictions on that and um, quite frankly, I just haven't really read uh, through all the guidance with a, with an eye on that. And so, um, the use itself in terms of of housing support, economic support uh, is allowable. I would just want to make sure, make clear that there isn't a catch as it might potentially relate uh, to public housing. So, um, if we get to a point this evening where we want to discuss that a little further, I think we've got a, a strategy to help deal with that, um, uh, should the council choose to. Thank you.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I was tasked with the uh, looking at the allocation for the employee support. When we originally spoke, I mentioned that we only did um, public safety for the CARES funds, which was fire police and the sheriff's office. Um, Mayor Walker brought to our attention that we could also um, add social services and human services to that. And so, Brian, can I share my screen?
Yes, just a moment. Go ahead, Ms. Shelton.
Okay. Can you see that?
Should be coming up shortly.
I do want to verify that, um, this would be a secondary bonus, correct?
I'm not sure. What do you mean by a secondary bonus?
We already gave out, we're giving out a bonus already.
Okay, so, can you see my screen now?
We cannot.
No, I can't share a screen. I'm doing something wrong here, let's see. Yeah?
Now it's coming, yep.
Okay. So, the first three lines, city sheriff, um, fire department, police admin, is what I had originally said. We would use the $400,000 that we had allocated for um, employee support. And then there was a lot of discussion on human services and social services. So, to that, to that total for public safety, I added those in, which brought us to a total of 407, 725, uh, which took us a little over the um, 400,000 that we had previously allocated for the support services. Um, there's been more discussion about the frontline workers for human services and social services. So I had conversations with uh, the directors, Kaki and Diane, to get a listing of those who served on the front line for them, um, during the time period that we um, we're allocating this bonus for. And that came up to the 12,379 for human services and 13,994 for social services. And add it to the um, first total, the 407, it's going to bring us to 434 um, $99.51, which, which is basically saying that now we're a little over the 400,000 we allocated, um, and we can get that from the contingency funds that's left. But we are, I have addressed it, um, Mayor Walker's concern about the frontline workers for human services and social services.
So what would round two funding be going for?
So, so since that changed the, um, my original proposal of 381, um, I'm asking now that we increased that to at least 500,000 for round two, to make sure all of those categories are covered.
I, I had thought I had understood the question to be, so what's the 381 or the 500 to be spent for?
So the 381 was my original proposal and that was just to include the sheriff, fire, police and social services. That was what the 381 was originally for.
In the same amounts as, as had been scheduled for the first time?
In the same amount that has been scheduled for the first time, yes, based on the first payout. Before, before the bottom piece, the bottom piece is when we're, we were talking about increasing the pay of the human service and social service workers who got 750 to 1250.
And in terms of um, the based on what the CARES dollars could be used for, then these are the only departments within the city that can utilize the, this, this funding, okay?
Correct.
Then if we started talking about other departments, that would be a general fund allocation?
Yes.
Exactly.
So, I took a look at utilities as well because we talked about them. The impact for utilities would be an additional 33,999 dollars. Um, would go to their frontline workers. And if you're looking at utilities, we would also have to look at CAT. Well, CAT has their own CARES funding, but we would have to include them as well, um, putting them at the 1250 total. Um, that, that would be an additional $61,360 for them.
61,000 just for CAT or CAT and utility?
Just for CAT.
As you said, I thought that they already have been funding that we're accomplishing that need.
CAT does have funding, but because of the structure we had, we had CAT at the 750, um, pretty much for their employees. Because most of those um, employees are temporary workers and so, um, where the temps were, I'm sorry, most of our workers are regular and temps, but we did not include them as frontline workers on the first round. But if we're going back now to do human services, social service and utilities, we need to include CAT because they were really out on the frontline. Um, transport, transporting our citizens all over the city.
Yeah, I think we, you know, the comments I brought up, you know, that I've made in the past was we have to look at, I think CAT, we have to look at the park side of um, parks and recreation. We have to look at our um, janitorial staff. Um, and so, I don't know if you all talk, you know, since we are I guess changing whatever the, how the request came in initially, but it would be um, just, no, for us, I guess, to have those numbers of how many employees we're talking about across the board, because I can see, um, like now, we can say increase in human social services because we can include that in cares. But if we start adding the utility, um, CAT, the janitorial staff that was on duty, the parks, um, part of Parks and Rec, then um, if we do one or, you know, a couple and not everyone, then people, you know, as parks people are passing utilities in the city, they're going to say, well, we were out just like they were, you know, those type of conversations. It's just, I, good for us to just know, um, if they were actually out and working and in their groups and not home and safe and what all of, what that amount would be for everyone.
So are you asking me to put everybody at the 1250 mark?
No, I, I don't know where people go. I'm just saying, I think the conversation around is just like the point you made just with CAT and where they, um, you know, where they have been. Then I know that, you know, we talked before about utilities working. Um, the parks crews have been out and they've had some exposures, you know, within, so they've had um, to have been kind of frontline, um, the individuals who've been cleaning the buildings to make sure that the people, other people who came in the buildings were safe. I just think it's a lot more, you know, broad than the, just the emergency personnel that included initially.
It is a lot more broad, but the broader you keep opening this, the more it's going to cost the city. It is a lot more broad, but the broader you keep opening this, the more it's going to cost the city.
I understand, but we also, whatever decisions that we make surrounding this, we have to ask, we have to be able to, ha, to, you know, just have a open discussion and tell, um, you know, the employees how we arrived at these, at these decisions. And who, and who was included and why and what it meant.
Okay.
I'm still going back to the 381 and what that is for.
So the 381 again was based on who could use the CARES Act. And so, after we had done the first allocation, it came up, social services should also be included. So the 381, 876 is actually the allocation. If you go over back to the allocation by date, 9/30/2020, if you add the 15, 609, the 114, 647, the 165, 248 and the 82,000, you should come back to that 381.
So this is, this plus the 400,000 is to give sheriff, fire department, police, human services and social services, the full bonus of being frontline workers, one time?
One time, yes.
Okay. I, I'm just, again, I wasn't sure if this was, you know, that we, as we hit round two, that meant we were going to send out a second bonus. Um, which I wasn't against, I just wanted to understand.
So, I think in the allocations that we saw last week, there is employee support in there. And I guess that is to be determined what that is to be used for, but it was lowered, I don't have that.
Right, it's the 381 that's, that was lowered. I had lowered that ba- based on where the actual expense came out for the first round. So again, that was just based on the actual dollars that we spent this first go around. But it did not include human services and social services. It only included the first, the, um, the public safety, basically.
So we had this.
So since, so since we're adding all of that in now, I'm asking that we increase the second round to at least cover what we paid out for the first allocation, the 434. That is an actual number.
Wish we had the 400,000 already allocated from round one. There's 34, $35,000 difference, 34,000.
Right.
So no matter what, that's going to come out. And then the balance of that will be distributed to these roles with, with the money that remains that's allocated to employee support.
And so the 56,000 that's remaining, possibly, in the, um, one.
Right, we would use that to cover that 34,000.
34,000, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then in terms of what the dollar amount would be for other, that we would have to cover in another way, when would we have that information?
Okay, so, if we looked at the total payroll for this, for this current one, the total payroll was 800 and, uh, there were 31,000, which 434,000 of that, we're going to pay through CARES. And then you have to subtract out, uh, CAT's portion, which is the 60, they roughly had 67,000. So about 350, I'm just roughing this now, about 350,000 is what we would need to find to pay the other staff. Which might be a little higher now because you're asking me now to identify key folks in other areas, such as the custodians, um, parks and recs, and what are the other departments who might have had folks on the frontline? Or still have folks on the frontline?
And it's, yeah. And then the parks part and parks and recs, it should primarily be the parks component of parks and rec and not the recs.
Correct.
But for tonight's discussion, excuse me, um, on the CARES funding, we are saying that you're asking for 500,000. So it's basically, there's 381 programmed here and out of the 625 that we have in contingency reserve, trying to draw from that to get to the, it's a 500.
Yes.
Is it 500 or the 434?
It's up to you. I'll take whatever you give me.
I, I would probably suggest something like just another 100, which puts it at, what, 481?
And let's make it a round even number, the 500,000.
So another 119.
So, as I'm looking at the, uh, document that was provided to us where it says 381, 876 for employee support, if we raise that to $500,000, we've got to take 119 out of something else? Or are you just proposing that we take it out of the contingency reserve at the, at the bottom?
We would take it out, out of the contingency fund at the bottom.
Okay, so instead of a 15% contingency, we'd have roughly a 12% or 13, 12 and a half percent?
But if we're looking at the FAR, that's 100 and, I mean, we've got the FAR request, the CRHA request. If that fits in, that's almost 100,000. Um, and then we also have, you know, I don't see anything specifically for, um, housing assistance, for housing loss assistance or anything like that?
The community support. And I think one, you know, because we, with these all flowing in, we may need to maybe the, get all of the requests that we received and look at them as a whole and then make that decision maybe the next meeting versus trying to do that tonight and piece it. Because even some of the things that were included initially, we don't know, have all the feedback that we got even for some of the things, um, that we received today. So is that a possibility or no?
We would like for you guys to approve the CARES Act allocation and we can always come back and up, and amend it, the line items as, as needed.
Yeah, I was specifically talking about if we just allocated the amount to the, um, I don't have it pulled up in front of me, uh, but the community supports. If we allocated the amount that's in there to it, but didn't specify where it was going and then looked at the, all the requests we got to date and then made that decision after that.
Well, the document talks about $639,000 set aside for community support. Just with the general definition of nutrition support through Jabba and Sin Bareras Housing Services, PPE Operational Support for West Haven Residence and Emergency Resource Hotline. So, I, I noticed three different proposals here. One was from FAR, one was from CRHA and the other was from the Conscious Capitalist Foundation. And if you add all those together, you've got 130, $240,000. So, if we were thinking about funding them, and I, I, I agree that one of the problems I have with all of this is the student mentoring proposal, we just got in at, uh, Mayor Walker, when you sent it to us at 2:39 PM this afternoon. And I don't know whether it's been looked at by, by the staff and whether they're in a position to comment as to whether it's eligible or not. But, uh, if we're talking about $240,000, basically, uh, coming out of $639,000, I don't know what other demands Ms. Demick or others may think that they've got against the 639,000. It seems like they've got some fairly specific ideas in mind.
Yeah. I think we, this would be pulled out of the contingency.
I agree.
Not the other, yeah.
And.
So just to clarify, the, um, the 639 that you see in community support, uh, does reflect specific requests, uh, from the organizations that were mentioned. Ms. Demick, if you, if you'd like that, but those, that 639 is actually structured around specific requests from those organizations.
The specific request, including the FAR request, including the CRHA request.
No, those are not, no, those are separate.
Those are not.
Those are new, yes.
Okay, so the 639, I don't, I don't want to be overly firm about it, but you have a pretty good idea of what you want to do with that 639.
Right.
Okay, so if we do take this again, just assuming for argument's sake, all $240,000 of these requests, additional requests, we decide to fund out of the contingency, now we're down to a contingency fund of about $260,000.
That would be correct.
Yes.
Which at this point is looking more like 7%.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Now, I, I guess the other question related to that is, do we have any thought that, um, business support, employee, that any of these other categories are, are going to need more money? The largest category there is operational modifications. How firm are those estimates that come to 1,275,000?
Marty Somer with Public Works, I can probably help answer that question a little bit. The majority of, uh, dollar amount for operational expenses are geared towards the schools and outfitting the schools to be ready for students to come back whenever that may be. Those numbers are pretty firm. There are probably about $200,000 in there that is a little bit of a swag, um, for modifications such as plexiglass installations. But beyond that, the rest of that 1 million is pretty firm, based on HVAC upgrades, um, upgrading the, the air filtration systems, UV lights, bi-polarization, things like that, and those numbers are, are pretty accurate.
I guess what I'm, what I'm really kind of coming down to is, uh, if a $250,000 or whatever that we came up with finally, if a $250,000 contingency fund is enough because the other larger quantity, the, the other larger known quantities are, are fairly well-known and fairly, fairly well-developed, then I'm a little less concerned about it. Although, uh, I also will recall that when we had the same size contingency reserve fund from the first swath of money, uh, $363,000, I think it was, wound up getting taken out of that without, frankly, without, I don't think anybody on council being aware of it at the time. So we had, while we may not, and whether we, whether we argue or not about how that money was spent, it kind of makes us wonder what the contingency, you know, who's in charge of the contingency fund?
Well, to answer that question, it's written into the appropriation that the city manager or is designated, has the ability to move funds amongst the, uh, the different funding categories, including the contingency reserve.
And there was another, um, and I guess Kaki was going to come on and present, but when, um, one of the things that I felt that we had missing here, and I'll talk about two other proposals, um, if we are, you know, moving forward, contemplating these decisions tonight. But, um, just, you know, real quickly, um, um, before Kaki comes on, in terms of the Conscious Capitalist Group, that's a nonprofit that's already, um, formed. Based on the information that they sent in, you can see that they do quite a bit of work with, um, other nonprofits in the area. But the conversations that I've been having is how do we ensure that, um, this virtual learning experience that we are in, that, um, youth who are having a challenging time with that experience and who had a, probably had a challenging time, um, during regular class, that they, that would put them at higher risk during this virtual learning, that we met their needs in some way. So I've been having these conversations with community members, um, over the, since sometime in August, um, asking different individuals just what their thoughts were and what maybe their capacity, um, was. Out of all of, you know, those conversations, these two individuals, um, Rush and Mr. Gray, they are the ones who submitted a proposal based on those conversations. I have communicated with Dr. Atkins, there are, um, more than 10 youth, but that is what they at this time feel like they have the capacity to meet. But 10 youth from the Buford, um, School Division, who there are some challenges with getting, um, you know, them to participate virtually. Um, and so, this is a, uh, would be a collaborative model with the school system, with the, um, administrators at the school, the teachers, the parents, an attempt in as safe of an environment, I have stressed, this is virtual for a reason. And that while, um, you know, in that rate that they presented, they do expect to maybe, you know, go to a student's house and drop lunch off, but then the next communication with that student and parent should be a virtual communication. And they, we don't know whether this is something that will work. We just know that the need is out there. And that they would have to, um, you know, do that relationship building. I'm sure that it will turn into more than, um, you know, a, this, they will have to have daily interactions. And I'm sure if anybody has done this work, they know that that relationship building, um, happens. Um, and once youth start depending on you, will happen, um, probably daily. So I have, you know, I will be keeping if this is something that they are able to move forward with as a, um, collaboration with the, with, you know, the city of Charlottesville, the school division and this. I will, and be keeping up with both the, um, individuals, Mr. Rush and Mr. Gray and the school system to make sure that this is, um, you know, successful and it's working and that it's something that we, um, need to continue, um, you know, funding or looking at the longer the virtual learning experience goes on.
The proposal that you shared, I thought there was different groups that would be targeted and it was, went beyond just 10 students at Buford.
No, and that, I think what you are probably referencing is that they just highlighted some other work that they've done.
Oh, so that amount that was being requested was for 10 students?
For the year, yes. And that can be broken down into, um, like a first and second semester, nine weeks and then moved, um, move forward. So it was a $50,000 request for the year, which turns out to about $5,000 per student. And out of that, they would be, um, any need, immediate needs that they can meet other students if they decide to take the students like a breakfast or a lunch, just as like a hey, which they are only giving that student and then leaving or whatever. Those, all of that will come out of that funding.
So do we know if that, I mean, this is all very new to staff. Do we know that this would qualify for funding?
I have had a chance to take a look at it and I do believe it would under the allowance for facilitating distance learning, which is also, uh, the, the rationale for the eligibility for the request by the Y and the Boys and Girls Club.
And how many students did the YMCA and Boys and Girls Club serve?
Uh, I don't recall off the top of my head. Ms. Demick, do you, do you recall?
I'm going to quick look at my email that I sent about this very issue and. There we go, 163 students at the Y with 76 at Walker and 87 at Brooks. They have the capacity to provide more and they're, uh, right now hiring so that they can meet the requirements for the, um, number of students to staff. and they're uh right now hiring so that they can meet the requirements for the um number of students to staff. There are fifty-three students at the Cherry Avenue Boys and Girls with a total of seventy-four spaces available. They can also expand. Um, if they need to, or if they um get enough staff, they're moving quite slowly to make sure that both programs are moving quite slowly to make sure that they meet the safety requirements for both students and staff. Uh, but that's, those are the numbers that they have right now. It is a full day program for both of those places.
Yeah, I mean, I just um sort of an obvious point everyone is aware of, but something I'm thinking about and sort of struggling to figure out is just the fact, obviously, we have a set amount of money. Um, we're obviously in a situation where there, there are no solutions, only trade-offs, and just trying to evaluate um in any decision we make, both the number of people served and the kind of intervention that's being made. Um, because I, we're obviously at a point where any request we get, you can make a case for why it's needed and legitimate. Um, but just trying to figure out, you know, when we're whether it be employee support or something else, is that at the expense of money to prevent evictions and homelessness, the resource hotline, et cetera? So, yeah.
And I guess the other question, um, Ms. Demick, is when other requests have come in that have kind of led us to the allocation suggestion that are in front of council, um, what does that process look like? Because I just, we did get like a flood of requests just today, and so I'm just trying to figure out how do we look at these equitably across other requests that have come in through through your office and otherwise?
So I mean, we did take a a a very targeted approach to the use of the CARES Act, both the first round and this round, the first round, we focused uh for at least community support on uh basic needs, so uh food and shelter being our primary focus. But we're very concerned, remain concerned about evictions um and what the cost of to that for both individuals and the community will be long-term. We know that the economic impact of the pandemic will last long after. Uh, we are sort of resume whatever might be our normal functioning as a community, and so we need the uh, we needed to focus on that pretty strongly uh at the beginning. And then a- as we move to this phase, we started to think about the impact of families uh who had been uh with kids at home for this period of time, struggling and we're about to go into uh virtual work and virtual school um and trying to create as many supports as possible for families while not jerking our responsibility for basic needs. And so that's loosely based on uh uh the assessments around needs for our community that have been generated out of the EOC at the beginning of the pandemic. Um, and uh so that has been the sort of test for us. I I think that the amount of need in the community is great, and so there's hardly an idea that we would hear that wouldn't be a good one. And so the issue really is, um, as Mr. Payne suggests, how do we prioritize uh what we're going to focus on uh this time? Uh, we can all hope that there's a third round in January or a fourth round in February, but we can't be sure of that. And so um so right now, I I'm most concerned about basic needs for people who live and have lived very close to the edge in our community, and I'm interested and concerned about families who are reaching their thresholds for stress management um in their uh sort of managing what it means to be virtual all the way around. So those are the sort of two areas at least that I'm focused on.
So is it possible for us to approve the allocation, knowing that we have this chunk of contingency and then allow staff to kind of work through some of the requests that we're seeing and make a recommendation to council on that? I'm just trying to figure out, I don't, I don't know that we're all prepared to make a final decision on some of these things tonight that came in today.
I will say, I don't feel ready.
And the only thing I would ask before we even go have this part of the conversation is to allow um Kaki to present um some of the done over the past um week, week and a half or so, to address some of the mental health needs that um we are seeing and will continue to arise during this time.
And we do, we do have a public hearing, right?
We do.
We do.
Should we hear from the public now, then?
Why didn't we? Um, Kaki, did you want to go over?
Sure, I'd love to present. One of the concerns that was raised um after the last conversation around CARES is whether uh CARES Act money could be used to support uh mental health concerns uh and wellness concerns in the community. Um, and uh it has been a a subject of great deal of conversation in the community um around the compounded historic stress and trauma that the Black community members uh uh face in our community, um, which impacts their capacity to protect themselves from disease, build individual resilience and manage their mental health needs, and otherwise provide uh mutual aid and support to each other. That Black community is tremendously resilient, um, and like the rest of us needs a a little support uh from the community. And so one of the um ideas that's been floating around the community with a collaboration, a very loose, not formal collaboration among many people who are uh seasoned providers in our community is to create a pop-up Black community wellness center uh and use this opportunity to use some CARES money to provide formal and informal supports for Black community members, including crisis intervention, support groups, wellness classes like meditation and yoga, community health education, uh maternal health support, uh access to referrals to culturally responsive support care, health and wellness campaign. Uh, we would hope that these would be both virtual and in person, knowing that there are people who need uh access to both kinds of modes, formal and drop-in, and then it would might also include some community and cultural events. It's important to note that there have been many people in the community who have been planning this and considering such a center, and they're absolutely ready to to jump into action. And this could be an opportunity for the city to support this idea as a critical service that's needed right now in our community and support it for several months, would provide practical access and support to community members who need it, and also uh to test out the model as a potentially permanent service delivery model. Um, so um, I think it's important that I recognize that uh this is not my idea, this is a genius idea come that has been identified by many other community members, I'm simply speaking it into the world.
And what kind of, what funding amounts are we talking for that initiative?
Uh, the sort of placeholder amount that I was thinking about was two hundred thousand. Um, I I'm not sure if I could uh justify that completely, it could be more, it could be less. Um, just to be perfectly frank, but that was the placeholder amount.
And it was that amount considered in any respect in the document that we've already been given?
No, this was outside of that cycle.
I got you, okay.
So just to clarify, we have what's been proposed in the allocations with six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in reserve. Of that, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand that may go towards additional employee support. We have three requests that have come from community organizations today, and then we have this two hundred thousand dollar or more or less proposal around the wellness center that you just described.
So I, I've, I've tall, I've had, I've had the opportunity to tally the
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Just to, just to give us all, uh, so the the mental health uh services, which Ms. Demick just described, uh FAR's request, the Conscious Capital Foundation, CRHA, and the additional employee support is roughly five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of the six hundred and twenty-five, so that would leave you uh approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars in contingency reserve if you were to fund all of those requests um in the requested amounts.
Which is about one and a half percent.
Um, yeah, that that sounds about right.
And um, Kaki, the housing services that's in the community support, um, what's, what's that encompass at this time?
So the, it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, for uh the emergency hotline, which continues to provide primarily rental assistance uh in emergency, uh occasional sort of mortgage assistance, uh but the focus is almost solely on housing. So that's continued to provide that, sorry.
Sorry, um, I I do just want to bring up last week on the Thomas Jefferson Plain District Commission, we got an update on the regional rent relief, and um, one of the things they highlighted is they've been able to be more effective in Charlottesville with that money because we have a community support hotline that is able to supplement what they're doing, and they've been able to get more money out here and touch more households than in the surrounding counties which don't have that. So I just bring that up when we're thinking about these trade-offs and some decisions we might want to make, that I think there is some synergy there to to touch even more households here in Charlottesville um in terms of facing uh eviction or other things that come with being behind on rent or mortgage payments.
Right now, both Charlottesville and Almarle have um a couple of different methods for providing rental assistance, and so if you don't meet the the threshold of qualifications for one, it's very likely that we can roll you into the a a different pool where you will meet the eligibility requirements and get some relief. And so it's very rare that we have to say no to anyone now uh based on this, really great. Sorry, interrupted somebody?
Oh, no, and it's very, um, you know, important, and I know that we had a conversation last week in hopes, um, and I hope that it's working out. I haven't received that update, but um, we do have um potentially, you know, some s- um staff that could support um the workload that the hotline is um taking on, and um, that's something that I'm hoping, you know, will work out in the future um for the city as a whole.
Well, again, I I I bring it up because with that, that money TJ PDC has access to, is competitive statewide in terms of if you get the money out quicker, you have access to more money. And we have the potential to access more of that pool of money if we're making decisions that accelerate the amount of money we're putting out in the speed of it. And if we can make decisions that accelerate that, that opens up more money to us that we wouldn't otherwise have. So I I just bring it up because it's a potential area of synergy that could increase the pool of money that we're increasing on people we're able to support.
And the hope is that that money will uh actually continue to flow after January one, which is unique uh in consideration of the CARES money.
Okay. All right, so we'll um open the public hearing at this time.
I can't hear Brian, sorry, Brian. No.
Well, I couldn't hear Brian either, but uh can you guys hear me?
Um, yes.
Hey, it's uh, it's Brian Collins. Um, I am a lifelong resident of Charlottesville, there my whole life. Uh, have children who've lived here their whole lives. Um, care a lot about this community, I know you all do too. I know this is a frustrating uh decision that you all have to work through. Um, I will say, you know, you've you've done a pretty good job with your first round of CARES Act funding. Um, and and I know that you all are taking this seriously. Um, the community is in crisis, uh, and there is a lot of need, like Ms. Demick says, um, and I think you're going to see an increasing need. Um, I, I just want to throw out there what I, what I said about the first round, which is I think that you you place too much um on the economic, the business um support piece, and I wonder if that's a place where you might look at to um to peel off some funding to meet human needs, um, of which there are many, and and of which um you've got new applications for things that I think for the most part are are things that um will help the city. So I work for FAR, the Resident Council for Public Housing in Charlottesville. Um, we got a grant um from the National Low Income Housing Coalition, um, the funds are about to run out. Um, that's allowed us to run um a couple of things, but primarily um getting food to public housing residents. And the main goal of this is to make it so people can remain safe in their home instead of uh interacting so that they are safe from the virus. Um, and so, you know, the recipients of this program are primarily folks who are are um vulnerable uh to the virus, and we've had a lot of success with it. Um, there's a lot of great side benefits to the work we've been doing. Uh, we're not a service organization, we're an organizing organization. Um, but, you know, we get to talk to people a whole lot more, and we find out their other needs, and we find other ways to help them, and it's been a really great success, and I think um, I think it's much needed. As, as for, I haven't seen much of CRHA's application, um, but I do think uh what they're proposing will alleviate some of the stress off of the the city's um uh rent relief. It it'll be a tiny little bit, um, but right now, public housing residents can access um what they're getting through the the relief that Ms. Demick's um providing. Um, so a little bit of that stress is going to be relieved um through CRHA's efforts. Um, and it'll be a a nice fell swoop to be able to deal with that, and I think that will be hugely impactful. Um, I I really do think this is a hard decision, and there is a lot of great need, and I just really hope um you can prioritize the community over business needs, and when you're looking at business, please think about um health and businesses that are are making sure that people um are, that that they're not making the 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 health situation worse. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent. As I was saying, if you'd like to speak to council, click the raise hand icon, or you can uh press star nine if you're on via telephone. Our next hand up is Don Gathers. Don, you're on with council.
Good evening, excuse me, once again, council, good evening, excuse me. Um, as uh, as Brandon just said, uh, in working for FAR, we certainly are doing all that we can to help the uh the residents of of a public housing community, recognizing that, as you said so eloquently, there's a vast amount of of need and of of trauma and despair in the community. Just please recognize that housing is one of those greatest needs. Um, and uh our coupling with the uh, the Food Justice Network, and also in 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 cooperation and partnering with, if you will, um, with the uh, the Housing Authority, we are trying to address some of the systemic issues that are going on in the community as it relates to housing. So while we are gearing up to try to uh take care of as many folks as we possibly can, please remember our residents and 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 uh in public housing and low-income housing who face uh, were facing needs long before the uh, the pandemic ever hit. So please take that into consideration. Look at the uh, with with some very stern interest, the requests coming to you from FAR, as well as those requests coming to you from CRHA. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And Mayor Walker, there are no other hands raised. Yep, we have one. Jay James, you're on the city council. You've got three minutes.
All right, thank you, Brian. Uh, good evening, um, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Uh, just watching the meeting tonight, I certainly can appreciate all of the the hard work and just very grateful for this opportunity. Just want to follow up on some of the comments that I was able to share with you, and we've sent you some written information as well. My name is Jay James, one sixty-nine Brookwood Drive in the city. I'm the Assistant Director of the Bridge Ministry Substance Abuse and Reentry Program on behalf of our Executive Director, William Washington, and our team, and again, grateful for the opportunity to just share a few things. You know, drug court was discussed a little bit earlier in the meeting, and I was able to to sit back and listen to some of that, and I would just offer to you, as I said before, it's a good program, and I believe the Bridge Ministry program is something that can work in in partnership with drug court. For example, if people are not successful in it, rather than sending them to jail, as as the mayor and some of you alluded to, if they're not successful, they could come to our inpatient program, uh, which is eighteen months in duration, and we have an eighty-six percent success rate and and offer vocational training. We have a partnership with Piedmont Virginia Community College that offers HVAC, electrical training, welding, heavy equipment, and the opportunity to to attain a career of twelve to twenty-four dollars an hour. So uh, we have a great relationship with the Alamo Charlottesville Regional Jail. We're committed to getting people out of the jails so they can escape the threat of the virus because we already know the statistics about those enclosed spaces. This is all information that you all have in concern over the public interest, and uh when there was a recent outbreak, we were an integral part of that communication process under Colonel Coomer's leadership that that kept that facility safe um during that point. So um during that point. So during the first wave of people who were released on home electronic monitoring, um, some of those individuals were not successful, just like we were talking about if they were sanctioned in Drug Court or they were released in the in the community in their old environment and and just needed to to do something different. Uh, they reoffended, went back into the facility. Well, some of those individuals are in our program and doing extremely well, passing their certification classes. Um, they're going to have three to four certifications before they leave our program. Uh, they're preparing for that guaranteed career opportunity I told you about uh earning uh to be able to earn a living. They'll move into our intern house and be a taxpaying, productive citizen. And most importantly, we won't have to spend any more money to incarcerate them. So over seventy percent of the individuals we serve are homeless, over ninety percent are indigent. But of course, our number one concern with CARES Act funding is protecting them from the threat of the virus. We test everyone for COVID nineteen in our partnership with the jail before they can come to our facility. So we have a clean, safe and secure bubble environment uh for these people to receive addiction treatment, receive vocational training, and ultimately change their lives. So uh our allocation or what we're requesting is is two hundred thousand dollars, and we're grateful for uh the consideration of counsel. I made it. Thank you all so much and appreciate your work.
Mayor Walker, no other hands are raised.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have one question for um Mr. James in terms of how many City of Charlottesville residents are they currently serving or plan would hope to serve, I guess, with the two hundred thousand dollar request?
It's a good question, Madam Mayor. Thank you. What what we've done, uh this is this community is where our program started twenty-five years ago. We've allocated thirty beds um to serve these, the Alamoal Charlottesville Regional Jail and serve our community. The criminal justice system is something that takes time. So currently, at last count, we had seven city residents. We have six on home electronic uh monitoring that are in our program, and we have those thirty beds that are reserved. We have others who want to enter our program. But honestly, Mayor, uh Madam Mayor, they're still in jail, waiting for the opportunity uh to come to our program. And and there there are several individuals who want to do that. We get referrals on a regular basis from the classification staff, people asking for applications um and referrals from attorneys. Joe Platania has been wonderful to work with as he is at times suggested that we just grab twenty people and put them uh and and all at one time and send them. But obviously, it involves the judges, involves the prosecutors, involves defense attorneys. And my job as the Assistant Director is to work closely with all of those individuals. So please, I don't mean to take, you all have had a long meeting, and I don't want to take too much of your time, but we've reserved those thirty beds. There are people trying to get into our program right now. And uh, we're just going to do everything we can. I'm back at it tomorrow to try to work with these attorneys and and prosecutors to so that they can attain this opportunity.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So no other hands, then I'll close the public um, the public hearing.
I have a question whenever I have a chance.
All right.
Um, so we have to spend this money by December thirty-first. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Far as we know.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and it's October fifth.
Yes, ma'am.
What are we thinking a contingency fund might be used for then in the next three months? I mean, what is, I mean, I understand in generally in savings, we want a contingency fund. But if we only have October, November, December, to we have three months to spend this money. We already saw with the tech area the first time around that sometimes while we might line things up to spend, it might not be able to be spent in time. Wouldn't it? So.
Well, I I will let uh Mr. Cullen in also expound on this, but I think there are things um in the operational category right now that it's it's conceivable that something between now and uh December thirty-first uh might require some expenditure. I'm I'm not saying that it will, but I I'd say operational modifications are probably where you would likely see something kind of pop up, but um also and again, I'll I'll turn it over to Chris. I think some that sometimes you have to think about, we're one city of of forty-eight thousand folks. Um, there, we we're an entire nation. And honestly, with globalization, an entire world of supply chain issues and in this country where everybody's going to be operating so far under the premise of spending by December thirty-first, some of these things, I mean, you you just don't know the procurement process, extra charges, extra shipping, things or estimates right now. But but again, I'll let Chris talk more about that and and any other um ways that the contingency might be necessary.
Thank you.
And and that was certainly a consideration um we took with both the first round of uh first allocation and the second allocation in terms of requests was the the likelihood of successfully uh spending it within that timeframe. Uh, but that being said, as John mentioned, um, you know, we're we're we are running into some supply chain issues. Uh, some of the things we're trying to procure, so is uh the rest of the world. The plan at this point is that if we, when we get into the mid-November timeframe, is to reach out to uh those team leads, uh, staff leads, um, reach to these funding categories and do a a look at where they think they are in terms of being able to procure and spend those funds by the end of the calendar year. We are able to reimburse ourselves for uh expenses related to COVID, which we we do have and have been tracking uh since March. You know, the predominant, you know, the majority of the requests uh for allocation one, allocation two were really more prospective. They were looking ahead to needs um and not really um, you know, addressing things that we had already spent. So to me, that's the that's the fallback strategy uh with whatever uh we we can't spend is that we can reimburse ourselves uh for COVID-related expenses uh to ensure that we maximize uh those CARES funds and uh don't have to write a check back to Washington.
Do we have an estimate right now as to a a night, just an idea of how much those expenses are?
Uh, I haven't honestly looked at that report in a while, so I would have to uh do a little digging to get that number for you.
Okay.
So I'm just curious if we are in a position where, you know, we've talked about ways that this contingency could be used. It's it's ten thirty. I'm just trying to figure out like where what are some decision points we can do right now versus what can we have staff look at? Because it's just, we just, we just got another request just now. I just think it's important that we look at these requests holistically and then determine how we're going to allocate the contingency um between internal and external, you know, needs um along the same lines that um Ms. Demick and staff have looked at it before. I I think for me, it's certainly like, what are those most immediate human needs that we have out in the community? And how how are those dollars going to be stretched to impact on the most people in a positive way? And um whether it's employees or 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 folks in the community. So I'm just trying to figure out, um, I I don't feel like I'm prepared to make the decision of how we're going to spend this contingency right now.
So I could offer, possibly offer a strategy um based on the discussion we've had so far. I really haven't heard a lot of uh concerns or questions regarding the the funding categories um with the exception of the of the contingency. That seems to be where we spend most of our time this evening. Um, possible path forward would be for you all to uh approve the appropriation as written. Um, and then uh staff, we can develop a a comprehensive briefing document uh for you on the um on what we've received so far. We we've actually done a fair amount of that already, but it's mostly uh emails and back and forth. And so I think we could probably pull that together fairly quickly uh in the next few days. Uh, get that to you and then give you all the opportunity to review that, ask some questions, and then figure out uh exactly what the formal action is to uh allocate some of that reserve. But um, that would be my suggestion at this point.
Would it? I, was there somebody that had a comment?
I was just gonna say, I guess, I was thinking, I think functionally, this is prior, functions the same by what you suggested what uh was, but I was just thinking like like with the two requests from FAR and CRHA, it's one hundred ninety thousand dollars sort of earmarking that hundred ninety thousand dollars, knowing that the ultimate goal is spending on that community support of some kind, at least individually, given the information we have so far. I think those would definitely be top priorities for me, but still being able to see, you know, if we get any additional requests, just to evaluate the full context. And I guess I I think that function similar to what you were saying, but I would definitely want to make sure that like with those we earmark that money as a priority to spend in community support rather than other areas. And at least for me, given the requests we've received so far, I think those seem to be particularly important ones. Um, but I don't know.
And I would just like to um recommend that even that community support category as a whole, that we look at all of that together. Um, and if we go back to even the YMCA um and the Boys and Girls Club request, even though I know that, you know, we heard those numbers, we're still talking about a population of children, even if it's not the amount requested. Uh, we're talking about youth that are not going to be reached in those two programs. We just still don't know while like Kaki told us, a hundred and sixty-three students at YMCA and the Brooks family portion and not Walker, any student from any district can go there. So we don't, we do we have the number of even how many of our youth? Um, is that total hundred and sixty-three all Charlottesville city students? Um, and then even thinking of that in terms of the program at Walker School, um, what additional support? Because this request came after that program was already established. So when I, when I as we move forward, I just would like us to think about the fact that Buford Middle School kid um student, Shawza High School students, I know it's easy to write off and looking at that amount as a year-long um program when you all do, when there is consideration for it. Um, and that it's attempting to meet students and see if they can be successful who um are at home where we voted, um, I guess where we made some decisions and the school board made some decisions about where the students should be um during the pandemic.
And I I did have one final thought, which in thinking about this, I s- I say this in 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 the context of every request we get, there is a legitimate basis for saying why this is important and needed and a good thing. And we're just unfortunately with the limited amount of money, every decision is evaluating trade offs when every option has some real legitimate purpose and need and benefit um and just evaluating, you know, again, just the trade offs of each decision. And in thinking about that, just at this meeting, when we're thinking about entering the fall and winter and the pressures that's going to create in terms of homelessness. And I do think that the housing crisis is hasn't really begun. I think we're going to see that really accelerate once the potential for some of these state and federal supports, the timelines for those runs out in terms of moratoriums and various things. And I do think when we're looking at the trade offs, that additional hundred twenty thousand to employee support, I in thinking about it, I do think we're just meeting more vital needs if we're moving that into community support for like the resource hotline and things like that. Um, and so I would just throw that out, thinking again, just in terms of those trade offs. Um, if that hundred twenty thousand has any potential to um, rather than employee support, prevent eviction or homelessness, that that would just be the most uh effective impact that we could make with those dollars. Um, so I would just throw that out as well as I think, I think we may be able to just meet more crisis vital needs with that hundred twenty thousand moving to community support. I may be alone on that, but.
No, I I I share some of that thought as well. I will say, I'm, I've been looking more at the the student mentoring proposal, and I'm struck, and maybe this is the wrong way for me to be looking at it, and I'm happy to be told that I am wrong. Uh, but if the, if the Y has a hundred and or a hundred and sixty-three kids over there, and we've given them a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, roughly a thousand dollars per kid. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club is getting roughly thirty-five hundred dollars per kid. Here, we're going to be doing five thousand dollars per kid. I guess my question would be, is there something distinctive about, let's say, the the ten students who would be assigned to them, where we would say these students are in more problematic, or uh they're a a a group that that can't be served in some other way? Um, what would be the justification for what's such significantly larger cost per student helped?
And so I think that's something that I've been advocating for um since I've been on council. Just if we um look at programs that we are consistent in terms of um, you know, what we're spending and ensuring that we um, you know, get the uh most um most efficient service for the dollars that we are spending. Um, and as I stated before, um, the conversation that I had with um Dr. Atkins is around on, um, these are not kids who are problematic. It's kids who are struggling um at an age where we typically start losing students um that are um showing already in the first half of the first nine weeks that they are struggling with um virtual learning. And um that rate of um twenty-five dollars um or so an hour will include prep um, the actual encounters and um, which I think will probably exceed basically um even what, you know, we are thinking, because you're talking about ensuring for them to be successful. They have to ensure that students' uh needs are met daily, that they'll be checking with them throughout the day. Um, at the end of the day, beginning of the day, they, you know, they have students who are signing on to virtual learning but are not participating after that sign-on. So part of this will be attempting to get those individuals engaged during the day and helping um ensure that um weekends um their work is being done. Um, and that they are ready for uh Monday again. And um, so that's um the line of thinking. And it's not just a cut and dry, because really, they're going to have to go into um the community, start, you know, meeting with um the youth that they'll be serving and then figure out which each um youth needs are. But based on what you just said, um, in terms of, you know, one costing two thousand something dollars, one causing thirty-five hundred, I think that's something that we should always um, um, always, you know, look at and ensure that um there's an alignment and that if there's a better use of funds somewhere else. Um, and so I wouldn't stop advocating for um for that now.
And I just want to get back to Mr. Cullen's recommendation that we move forward with this appropriation that's been outlined and that we allow staff an opportunity to evaluate all the requests that are coming in through a similar lens of what is meeting the most urgent needs of the community, what's going to serve the most folks in the community. And I agree that putting more towards the community support area is is something that I I certainly will get behind, but I also just feel like we we have to look at all these things um holistically. And I just don't feel like I'm in a position at this point, and we have several more items on the agenda to do that right now. And I would like staff to weigh in on this because they've been looking at all the other allocations and how they've been considering them.
I think based on what I'm hearing and as some of the numbers I cited earlier, I think we would essentially reserve the entire contingency amount at this point. Uh, the The, the five, um, requests that you've already received, uh, you know, total almost $559,000. So I think, you know, for purposes of right now, we can just, as a staff, just know that there's at least that much in, uh, requests and interests and, and possibly even a little bit more, uh, at this point. So again, if, um, if, if it's council's choice to move this forward, again, I think it's at this point, not hearing a lot of discussion or consensus around the other funding categories. Um, that would certainly, uh, could be a starting, you know, could certainly adopt that portion of the appropriation. And again, we would keep the six twenty, six twenty-five as a contingency reserve, but we know that there's further discussion. And frankly, at this point, I don't foresee any need with the other allocations that we would actually need to tap that anytime soon. So, uh, I think we would have a little bit of time for y'all to have a more thoughtful conversation about, that dollar amount and, uh, the various proposals that you've received.
Oh, we do need to remove the dollars for the employee support from the contingency.
The decision was to, to remove the 381 and put that down to the reserve, that, yes, that would be, uh, somewhat different.
Well, no, I thought there was an additional request. Was it 119?
Yes, ma'am, that would, so the, I think, I think we had arrived at a total of 500,000. And so the 381 is already, uh, baked in, for lack of a better term, into that category. And then the difference would be taken out of the contingency reserve. And that, that, that total number of 559 that I gave you includes that additional approximately 118, along with, uh, the other requests that have been made so far. So that, that additional piece would be in the mix in terms of the contingency reserve considerations.
So that's what if council, if that is, um, something that you all can agree with for us to remove that additional funding, for the employee support to the, um, to add it to the 381. And then the remaining contingency reserve for us to look at that the next council meeting and, um, vote on that based off of the recommendations that we get from staff.
I guess one question, since, uh, Michael, I thought I understood Michael to, to be suggesting that maybe he would be more interested in putting that money towards rent relief rather than towards, uh, additional pay for, um, for staff. Have I fairly summarized your, your thought there, Michael? I don't mean to put words in your mouth.
That, that would definitely be accurate. I think where I would be at is keeping that 118 in the contingency fund. I mean, my preference would be for rental relief, some kind of vital community support and keeping that 118,000 in the contingency fund to evaluate in that context of every request we get. Because again, right, just thinking about every choice we make having trade-offs. You know, if we've got requests and the need coming in, that, you know, it's going to be a zero-sum game where that 118,000 goes to that additional employee support versus emergency rental relief for folks who'd be facing eviction or homelessness. I just think we're making the deeper, more vital impacts in that area rather than the employee support. Um, and I wouldn't feel comfortable saying we're going to prioritize that additional employee support over any other request we get in. Now, if it turns out, I doubt this will be the case, but if it turns out we don't get enough requests or vital community support that would exhaust the contingency fund and there's funds left over, then I would definitely be open to adding that to additional employee support. But again, just think about that trade-off. I, I just think that's the more vital, uh, emergency need. And, and final question, I think, final question I foresee staff is, would you know what the rough timeline would be in terms of when we would be making a final decision as council? And would that be something that requires us to, uh, take a, a formal vote or, or have, you know, as an agenda item?
Well, I think there are, um, two ways to look at this. Um, one is the contingency and, and there's the language about the city manager having some authority about moving funds between categories. What I would propose is the following. I, I think you're right in terms of we, we probably don't want to pull that 118 out right now. You probably do want to evaluate things holistically. I think it is also a good suggestion. We should check with the Planning District Commission to see exactly when we're talking about these housing support initiatives. What, you know, what, how to get, how to, uh, actually maximize those dollars. And like you said, I mean, ultimately, if this is a case of if the city is spending money, that TJPDC's program would cover as well. I think we want the Planning District Commission because the city has a certain allocation out of that money. And like you stated, those dollars don't have to be spent by December 31st. And, and also they get replenished. So it would make no sense for us not to at least look at that issue. In terms of the contingency, I would prefer we take a look at the proposals tonight and come back to you as a staff with analysis on each of the proposals we've heard tonight. And present it to you at that, at your next council meeting.
You didn't mean that staff is going to look at them tonight. I think that you.
Right, right. The, the proposals presented.
You did, you did say that. I'm just making sure. I saw, I saw a couple of reactions and I'm like, I don't think.
And so my only, um, concern there is that we are expanding even the, from the CPDCFD Sheriff Office. This proposal for 381 includes DSS. And, um, we've already established that human services, um, is included and that we're going to pool funding from the CARES One, um, allocations to go to that. So there's really no way for us to say, and this time we're only going to go back to three or four categories. And then my other issue is looking at the way it's been, um, no matter what we do in the community su- support category, because I think as Michael, um, Counselor Payne has stated, that if we heard these stories, just like we do during the vibrant community, um, time of budget season, that they are all things that we would want, um, hope that they are being done as presented and that we would want to fund. But my main issue with this is that I think every other category, we, someone has voiced, um, you know, concerns about like even we talked about, you know, someone mentioned a business, you know, um, support fund. And we know that when we're talking about stability, um, and, and we heard some of the business owners discuss this, um, earlier, that, um, for the businesses that are struggling, the most they will need support. But we have not touched whether this 1.2 million dollar allocations twice, the largest allocation both times, whether that was, um, the best use, um, of funding. And, um, and I know this time we've been told that the, this allocation will be going to primarily to schools. But, um, it is something that I think that we should have questioned both, uh, both times. And so if, you know, it's just something to think about when we're talking about trade-off. I don't think that our employees should be the first category that we are willing to put on hold.
When I think about the dollars that are being allocated, I just assume there would be a reshuffling of those dollars to still be able to provide supports to all of the categories of employees that we're trying to cover. But the dollar amounts may be different than what was originally forecasted so that we're still trying to work within the limits of what's been allocated for now and then revisiting it later. Um, and so that's just kind of where I, I was thinking with that.
But with CARES dollars, we are not able to expand those categories. So we have.
No, I'm just saying that say the 381 was supposed to be a certain amount was assumed by Ms. Shelton and whoever was going to be amount for this, this type of role versus this type of role. The 381 is still there. It's just how it gets distributed might be a little different because it might be more limiting, was all I'm saying. And maybe it won't. Maybe we're going to circle back here and we're going to be like, no, this is something that's still a priority. I'm not saying it's not a priority. I just feel like right now there's way too many balls in the air and I would like to just look at this contingency dollars holistically and also from the similar decision-making that's happened to date. And, um, I, I just, I said that though, so.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion?
So I move we, um, approve the appropriation of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Act CARES funds for the second allocation at the tune of 4.123 million.
Second.
All right. Any other questions, discussion? All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
No.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Okay, that carries four to one. And thank you. All right, next up, we have another public hearing. Closing, vacating, discontinuing certain utility easements within the public right-of-way for Jersey Pine Ridge and Sunset Drive, um, public streets within Briarwood subdivision. And it's the first of two readings.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. In 2011, the city acquired a natural gas line easement from Woodbrier Associates. The easement is located within Sunset Drive and Jersey Pine Ridge in the Briarwood subdivision in Almar County. The Virginia Department of Transportation is prepared to accept the roads in the state highway system. As part of the process, an ordinance and quitclaim deed has been drafted so BDOT can take over the maintenance of the streets. The quitclaim deed requires the gas lines to remain in their present location. And if the street ce- ceases to be part of the state highway system, the easements in that street will automatically revert back to the city. The natural gas lines continue to be owned and maintained by the city even after the easements are quitclaimed to the state. A public hearing is required by law to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed conveyance of a public interest. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance and quitclaim deed. Now I'm available if you have any questions.
Councilors, any questions? No? Okay.
Actually, I, I do have one question and I may just be over tech, overly technical about this. But I'm curious, as I look at the, uh, the document that was provided to us in the packet, it called, and there's an ordinance that has at the bottom of it a date of December 2nd, 2019. Was that simply something that was left over from, basically a cut and paste from a prior similar document or had this been originally thought to be brought to council back last year?
Um, no, it was not, Lisa. I'm sorry.
It, I'm sorry, it is a typo. Uh, we apologize for that. We did not catch that.
Okay, I, 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 I was just curious as to whether there was a history behind this that I didn't know.
There may be a history. It, it may have been in the planning for some amount of time. But, uh, this type of ordinance is something that we use whenever we, we have, um, vacations of this type of interest. And, uh, um, on this particular instance, um, I think, um, our proofreading skills failed us.
Well, I remember, but I also note the very last thing is that it talks about this being, uh, done without a second reading. Is that an option?
Um, yes.
Okay. I, I don't see anything about this that's controversial. And I would frankly suggest that we do it as one reading and dispense with the second reading.
Hey, any other, um, questions and councilors? Are you in support of that? One reading?
Yo.
I would so move then.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Gotcha. Sorry.
So open, um, public hearing at this time?
If you'd like to speak at this public hearing, click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. There are no hands raised.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. All right, now is there a motion?
Now I'll make the motion and that we do it as one reading.
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Okay, so that's a motion to approve as presented with waving one, waving the second reading.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Okay, that carries five to zero. Thank you. And now is there a motion?
Do we do it all? I thought that was all encompassing.
Yes, it was all encompassing.
Okay, I just heard, uh, for one reading, so I thought we had to read the rest of it. Okay. Ms. Thomas cleared up. Okay. Specifics of the motion. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next we have, um, the council strategic plan update. And, um, I don't, um, have any updates other than that we're going, um, through the process. We still haven't, um, determined whether or not we, um, will have the two meetings in, um, October. So we're still having those, um, and conversations. And then I will get it, you know, be able to update, um, council on that. But at this time, we can open it up to, for public comment.
If you'd like to speak to council and provide feedback on the strategic planning process, click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. First up is Brandon Collins. Brandon, you're on with council.
Good evening, City Council. Again, um, I hope you all are having a great night. Just wanted to be your friendly reminder, um, that you are in the middle of a housing crisis that's been going on for, uh, more than a decade, a couple decades. You've seen the, the, the housing report, um, a lot of discussion last year about the kind of resources that we're going to need to be in play to address that housing crisis. And I just really hope you haven't taken your eyes off of that when you're, when you're talking about your strategic plan and, and addressing the housing crisis should be, uh, the number one priority. I had a friend and, uh, uh, sometimes mentor and colleague, um, who's, who was on city council many years ago. And she, uh, once, uh, said public housing was, uh, housing, public housing was healthcare. Public housing was the environment, um, public housing was aging in place. And, and I've always thought that was a reminder that we, we all have to remember. And I think, uh, right now, as we look at redevelopment and public housing, it really is encompassing all of those things. So when you're talking about climate crisis, you can look at what's happening with redevelopment and, and the protections that are in there, sometimes attached to the funding. That we are looking at healthcare, we're looking at, um, opportunities for people. And we're looking for, um, some kind of sense of amends, not just a leveling up, uh, and not just equal opportunity, but true equity, a true, um, sort of payback for, for, uh, you know, centuries of, of problems out of the city of Charlottesville. Sometimes from city council, sometimes from the housing authorities, sometimes from planning commission and, and, you know, oftentimes from, the rest of Charlottesville, which has not, um, done enough, um, for the people of this city. So as you're looking at housing, um, you're, you're helping everybody. Um, but it is really a vehicle to address many of the serious, serious, um, other crises that we have, including the crisis of white supremacy, um, environmental crisis, uh, and of course our affordable housing crisis. So, um, I, I really hope you, you keep that at the forefront and do some serious digging. Sorry, that's my son yawning. Sorry, that's my son yawning because he's supposed to be sleeping. I'm going to leave it at that. Just another friendly reminder about your strategic plan. And I hope you keep that on the forefront and do some real digging and soul searching for what that means for you and what it can mean for this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other?
No other hands are raised right now. Last chance.
Okay.
Nobody else.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the report, City of Promise.
Thank you, council. Hang in there, you're almost done. I promised to leave you with photos of smiling people to cap off your evening. Brian, you're going to run my PowerPoint for me, correct? There we go.
It's up now. Yep.
All right, thank you. So thank you for inviting me to offer this update on the work of City of Promise. It's very relevant to the other topics that you've been discussing tonight. What is now a nonprofit began as a collaboration between the city and a nonprofit partners, some of which are identified here on this slide. The goal was to create a place-based continuum of service, services modeled after the Harlem Children's Zone in New York to help children reach their academic and personal potential and to close the achievement gap. The initiative received five hundred thousand dollars in the form of a planning grant to get started. Our neighborhoods are West Haven, Tenth and Page, and Star Hill, which includes nine hundred households. But our staff currently focuses ninety-nine percent of our time in West Haven, which has one hundred and twenty-six units and about three hundred people from birth to senior citizens. I am the third director of the program, and in addition to our board, we have four committees now comprised of about twenty people altogether who offer guidance and oversight. This is our first year as a five oh one C three organization, and Ready Kids served as our fiscal agent for eight years. They managed our books, and we use their tax ID number to receive donations. But now we're independent from them. Our mission was redefined last year, or clarified, I should say. And in a nutshell, it's to end generational poverty by ensuring academic support and vital resources reach the community. To avoid duplication, we always start with partners and point families to existing programs first. We have developed programs within that fill some important gaps that we have identified. We have a small but mighty staff of four full-time and one part-time employee. Basically, each of us who are full-time serve one age span along the continuum from pre-birth to adult. Last year, we engaged at least sixteen hundred times in individual contacts with our neighbors to address academic and other needs as they arose. Our budget for FY twenty-one is three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, of which sixty-nine percent goes directly into program priorities that benefit the community. We also have two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in reserve. This chart is important because it shows revenue over four years. And you can see shaded in blue the amount of funding received from private foundations and individuals over the past several years compared to support from the city, which is shaded in orange. And of course, that number is declining in accordance with your arrangement that the city has had with City of Promise for quite some time. So this year, what the city provides is about fifteen percent of our total budget, and that amount will reduce to zero in three years. The next slide shows that we're prepared for the shift because of our increase in donors. Even though that number seems to be leveling off, donation amounts at the top end of our giving have increased. So five-figure donations have increased. And this speaks to the generosity of the community and the strong willingness to invest in economic and racial equity. So I'm really inspired by the growing interest in the work of City of Promise and then the issues facing our community, which of course are just one microcosm of similar problems across the city. So first and foremost, City of Promise has always been a resource hub through which resources reach the community. So this chart shows in blue the schools that the students attend in our footprint, though we do have a few kids at Lugo McGinnis. And so the numbers beside the schools indicate about how many children from Hardy Drive attend each school. And then the green bands represent the agencies, individuals, and nonprofits that also touch the community and with whom we collaborate. And so altogether, it's about a hundred and forty children in Hardy Drive that we reach. In twenty nineteen twenty, we collaborated to host seventy-four partner activities with the agencies listed there that we engage with almost weekly. So for example, our staff met children at the bus stop, walked them down to the garden or to Page Street, and engaged in learning there. Then we would walk them back up to the bus stop or back home. Once COVID is over, we really want to encourage student participation in extracurricular activities outside the neighborhood. And that is something they're prepared to pay for and provide transportation for. Another example of how we provide access, that we covered the five thousand dollar cost for families to receive pool passes and for kids to go to Parks and Rec camp in the summer of twenty nineteen. This speaks to the previous, now this is the same slide. The American Legion provided coats, so they, you know, they called us, can you distribute these coats? Quantitative investment management had UVA women's basketball tickets. So we took three groups of students to JPJ and enjoyed the suite there. So these are examples of how we act as an opportunity broker to offer students enriching experiences. COVID response has been really meaningful to me because I was contacted by a number of people and organizations that wanted to provide immediate assistance to the community. And because we are neighborhood-based, because we're very relational, we're there on the street, we received thirty thousand dollars in donations that we were able to deploy right away. We spent about eighteen thousand dollars on fifty-dollar Kroger cards that we distributed, about three hundred and seventy-five cards. Sixty-eight of those were distributed to people outside of our footprint. We gave away cleaning supplies over the course of eight weeks and other things that you see listed there. Right now, we are, we have two learning center locations, one on Page Street and one on Tenth Street. And we are serving about six to eight families right now with a capacity per day to serve thirteen children. But we've never reached that capacity. And we don't have, we're just there to proctor. We're not there to really support learning. We're just giving the children a alternative space to do their schoolwork. But we also helped facilitate enrollment to the Y for twelve children, and we're transporting two families to and from the Y every day. And so then this final section is just about the services that we've decided we should provide directly. Over the years, each director has contributed to defining that pathway that has become our service model. We realize that it's not enough for us to be a resource hub if we want to see children go to college, if that's what they want or to be prepared for their career. So we have identified four primary areas of provision and preparation. The first is gateway services. And if you think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, it's what you've been talking about this whole evening, about people needing their basic needs met. And so one way we do that is just by being ready to help people. They call us, they text us when they have an emergency, and we don't make them jump through a bunch of hoops or fill out a bunch of paperwork. So in twenty nineteen twenty, the greatest need was for transportation. We offered ninety-one forms or opportunities for transportation. And sometimes that's in our personal vehicles, taking people to school, kids to school if they missed the bus. But we also order Lyft rides. And this is a great need. And then the others there, you can see their food, household items. We've helped people pay bills, that kind of thing. And the main goal of gateway services is to have an entry point for building relationships. Promise Baby Academy is our second program. Last year was not a typical year, but usually we impact about eight moms, eight to ten children with support and camaraderie. The goal of early childhood programs are to build a sense of community for moms, ensuring they have access to information to build their parenting confidence so their children can be preschool-ready. We support them through the enrollment process for quality preschool. And during their time in elementary school, we work closely with principals and parents to troubleshoot when children and families have needs. The bread and butter of our program is pathway coaching. We have built really great relationships at Walker, Buford, and CHS, so that our staff is often at school, connecting with students during the day. Right now, we're doing virtual coaching and doing some in-person items, some in-person actions safely when they can be done that way. The goal of pathway coaching is to build skills. The students need to raise their grades. You take them on college visits and have dynamic activities after school. Most notably, last year is the film they created as part of the Youth and Blue Dialogue Project with the Charlottesville Police Department. And that film is now being used as a training tool by other police departments in the South. Another piece of pathway coaching that I'm really proud of was that we established the Senior Success Fund for the class of twenty twenty last spring, and a number of businesses stepped in to provide funds for these youth. They were eligible for up to a thousand dollars to support their next step after they completed some learning sessions and community service. And they also received these really nice senior portraits for your charge. And that was a way of making better, really hard spring for them. And then the last portion of what we do, which is probably the most significant right now, and an evolution of how we do dual generation. And that's our adult empowerment. Historically, adult empowerment has been directing adults to outside resources for job placement or health needs. We have helped people get their business license and write resumes. Our pathway coaches support parents in learning how to be advocates for their kids. Most important is the community leadership team, which now meets monthly as an advisory board to me and to really increase their influence in the neighborhood and center their voices for other, for the benefit of the community. Our strategic goal that centers around adult empowerment is this family literacy model. And everything we've done up to now has laid the foundation for this. And we want to anchor what we do in this evidence-based family literacy, which is based off the research that suggests a child's academic trajectory is determined by their parents' educational attainment. And so we want to formalize and sort of program how we build up parents and help them reach their goals while simultaneously helping the children reach their goals too. So it becomes more of a family-centered program model as opposed to just focusing on the kids. And then the last slide just shows the desired impact of this move to this family literacy model. We just had five thousand dollars worth of training to implement this coming up in January. Improved reading scores and attendance, improved parent involvement in their children's schoolwork, and improved earning power. So these are the things that we're up to and the impact that we've had. And I appreciate your time and look forward to the time when the only mask a child wears is one that's really cute like that. Questions, comments?
I hit the wrong button. Well, first, thank you, and thank you for sticking with us so late. I know we all had hoped that this meeting was going to not last as long, so I appreciate that. The only, I guess, I don't really necessarily have a comp, questions for you. But council, I just would like for you to just kind of look at the couple screens ago when Ms. Coleman talked about fifteen percent of the funding coming from us and that there is plans, did you say, within the next three years?
Yes, it's supposed to reduce by twenty-five percent every year for the next three years.
And I know as being one of the initial employees with the City of Promise, how these discussions came to be. But I can say also that the original intention, and it's something that we should really look at when we talk about what we are funding and where our money goes. And I'm so happy for you all that you all have your five oh one C three designation now. But there isn't, no matter what, you know, they are able to do in terms of private dollars, it is important for us to, I think, continue to show support, even if that was a discussion that has been had in the past for this initiative. And to keep in mind that the original intent was not for this to just stay within the current footprint, that it was supposed to encompass every low-income neighborhood in the city. And that oftentimes, and at the beginning of the pandemic, this was a conversation that I had. Why is West Haven getting what First Street doesn't get? And that conversation still goes on today, where because West Haven has been highlighted the way that it's had because of City of Promise, that there are some other areas in the city that does not, they do not receive these direct services. So I would just like for us to think about not only the not stopping funding in the time period that has been discussed, but also for City of Promise to understand that they are, you know, are able when they're talking about expanding and their current needs and whether future needs stay true to that original intention or not, that the city's support is there for them to request funding like any other organization. And even the organization that just served as their fiscal agent, it has served as a fiscal agent since its inception, we provide them funding every year, and there's no cap on it. So I would just like for us to consider that and just have that conversation because in order to help, whether it's West Haven or all the other areas, that we know that the funding will be needed. So that's just the one thing that stuck out, stuck out to me during the presentation.
Mayor Walker, I just want to say that we had talked about last year, reducing the amount that came from the general fund that was embedded in the budget, the City of Promise, because originally, City of Promise had a budget in the Department of Human Services. And so reducing that by twenty-five percent every year until zero, and then they would be eligible to apply for the vibrant community funds like all other nonprofits. I think the distinction was that that wasn't, that they would arrive at zero and never be able to enjoy city money again, but that they would be moved into a different pool of eligibility and not, not directly funded through the general fund.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I just want to echo the point around just, I share in the desire for these types of services to be more broadly available to more folks in our community who need this, whether it's our youth or our adults. It's just one of the things that resonated with me, just hearing from it and just recognizing the footprint is powerful. But it's limited, and we certainly have greater need throughout the community. And look forward to ways that the city can evaluate supporting that growth.
I'd just like to agree with that as well.
Are there any other comments, questions?
Just thank you very much to you and your staff. I know it's been a struggle during COVID for your staff to also stay safe. And I know you've gone to great lengths to ensure that, so thank you.
Thank you. We have, it's all worth it.
And thank you for staying up with us.
I don't know if that was worth it. I hope you felt it was.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
We all take care.
So next up, we have the Home to Hope Report. And.
And Holly, I'll start it whenever you're ready.
Okay, if you want to go ahead and start the PowerPoint presentation, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to start off by saying thank you to Mayor Walker, City Council, City Management for allowing us to provide an update on Home to Hope. It's been almost one year since the program started, and we're super excited about the progress that has been made. And we're ready to share some of the success stories with you tonight. I will be joined by, my name is Holly Lee. I'm in the Office of Economic Development. I will be joined by some of the colleagues in our office who have made this program what it is. And that includes our four peer navigators, Shadé Gilliam, Ramonda Jackson, Stacy Washington, and Whitmore Merrick, as well as two of our downtown job center coordinators, Daryl Simpson and Roy Fitch. I would like to thank them for the passion that they have shown and contributed to this program and to the participants that we serve, especially during COVID nineteen and all the effort they have put forth. They have been out there on the front lines, giving out food, taking people to get them housing, just answering hotline phone calls. And so I really appreciate all that they've done. Next slide, please, Brian. So I'm just going to start off by providing an overview of what Home to Hope is, especially for those of you who weren't on council when it was originally approved. Next slide, please. So Home to Hope, it started as a proposal. It's initiative of Mayor Nakia Walker to serve individuals who are being released from incarceration. And the idea is that they are going to be served. And the idea is that they are going to be served by people who themselves have lived experience because they are the best individuals to help people navigate the pathway and acclimate themselves back into our community. And so the proposal was done in early two thousand nineteen. It was a partnership between the Office of Economic Development and Human Services. It requested funding for a workforce development training program. And also the funding of a pure navigation unit, which is now called Home to Hope. The training program was seven weeks long. It started in August of two thousand and nineteen. We had eight participants and eight graduates. And Stacy reminded me yesterday that it was, it's been exactly one year yesterday when they graduated. So congratulations to everyone again on a job well done. And the students during the training, they received they received skills that they have used over the past year to serve our participants. That includes things like peer support, specialist certification, wellness recovery and action plan facilitation certification. They also got computer training and administration because we do a lot of case management and keep those case notes, which everybody loves. And then also just basic workplace readiness to make sure that everyone was ready to be in an environment like we're in. And so ultimately what happened, again, all eight individuals graduated. Four were hired by the city and created the Home to Hope Peer Navigation Unit. And four were hired by our partners and they include On Our Own, the Fountain Fund, Piedmont House, and our own Downtown Job Center was lucky enough to have one of the graduates for quite some time. So those four individuals who were hired by the city, again, are now our Home to Hope Peer Navigators. Four full-time individuals working the Downtown Job Center that is located in a lower level of Jefferson Madison Regional Library. And the primary services that they offer, again, the key here is that the individuals who are our peer navigators have lived experience themselves. So again, they know what it's like to be released from incarceration and struggle and face the barriers that individuals who are coming out of jail face when they come out. And so they serve our participants by offering peer recovery services, supportive services, lots of referrals to our partners. And then we do a lot of community engagement to make sure that people know who we are and that we know who we are and what we do. And that's been critical in getting people enrolled into our program. So at this point, I'd like to pass it over to Ramonda Jackson. And she is one of our peer navigators and she's going to talk about who we serve and what it all looks like.
And Ramonda, you'll have to unmute your microphone.
Thank you for that. Hello, everyone, and thank you for this awesome opportunity and your time. And as I can see, the time has been far spent. I'm gonna just jump right down. Like Holly said, I'm Ramonda Jackson. I'm one of the peer navigators for Home to Hope. And the first question was, who do we serve? Home to Hope serve, time served individuals, which mean individuals that have been incarcerated, whether recently or in time past. However, there are those that may not have been incarcerated for their charges that are on their record. We serve them as well. Overall, we serve any individual that has had any sort of history with the criminal justice system. As of, can I get the slide up? As of November twenty nineteen, we have enrolled two hundred and thirty-five participants into the Home to Hope program. Or better stated, the Home to Hope Initiative. As of September twenty twenty, we have a hundred and fifty-nine active participants and that number has steadily increased by thirty percent since July. That thirty percent increase is in direct correlation to inmates being released on home electronic monitoring and incarceration due to COVID nineteen, as well as the housing relief fund. Because participation with the Home to Hope program is a requirement for reentry and homeless individuals that also have criminal backgrounds. When we take a look at our numbers based on race, gender, and when a person completes the intake process in relation to when they are released, we found that seventy-eight percent of our participants are African-American, while twenty percent are of our participants are Caucasian. And the remaining two percent were Hispanic. When we took a look at gender, the gender of our participants, we found that sixty-five percent of our participants are male, while thirty-four are female and one, one percent identified as other. As to when participants complete intake in correlation to when they are released, you see that forty-seven percent completed the intake process within six months of their release. Thirty-three percent completed their intake over a year after being released. Thirteen percent completed their intake between six months and one year post-release. And seven percent did not identify a release date. Can I have the next slide, please? So how does all of this work? That's a perfect question for me. And how this work is, when a potential participant comes to Home to Hope, we follow a very particular process for enrollment. First, the person will complete an intake process. And that can happen one of two ways, whether it's in person, using a hard copy or our online process, which we have done a lot of online here lately due to COVID nineteen and trying to do the social distancing and things of that nature. So once we receive the intake, we complete, once we receive the intake, we contact the person to complete initial assessment to determine their immediate needs and their goals. We basically obtain a pretty broad picture of this person in which we will be working with and or serving. We also give the participant an overview of what Home to Hope offers and the requirements of the program. Each participant will walk away knowing what is required of them and what can be expected from us. We will explain the tiers and the phases that we have set up in order to identify where everyone is within the program. The phases start at ground zero, which is our orientation phase. Where we acquaint each individual with the program and how it is structured. Then it leads into the stabilizing phase, which is our second tier, where each participant navigate their, each participant navigates their path to stability. Our third tier is thriving phase where participants are up and running, yet they still need that extra push, so to speak. And once our participants are meeting goals, mentoring others and exemplifying self-sufficiency, we would deem them, we would deem those participants as thriving, which is the fourth tier. Each participant starts out on the orientation phase so they can become accustomed to what we do and how it all works. We explain to each participant what active participation looks like. And an example of active participation would be a particular individual would maintain communication with their peer navigator. They would attend a minimum of two groups a month. And most of, a lot of our participants actually come to more than the minimum two groups. A lot of them come all the time. He or she would also work closely with their peer navigator to create an effective and adaptive case plan that includes setting short-term goals and long-term goals, working on job search skills, resume writing, mock interviews, and suiting up for success, just to name a few things. I want you to know that active participation can also look different with each individual because it's based on the client and their individual needs and goals. So what do we do? That would be the next question. And that could be answered by my colleague and friend Whitmore Merrick, Whitmore.
Thanks, Ramonda.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we do here at Home to Hope. We are very big on peer recovery services. And our peer recovery services, one of them consists of one-on-one peer recovery services, which we spend hundreds of hours with our participants. And that's because this can consist of more time and confidentiality. Also consists of phone calls, Zoom meetings, court dates, and other, other emergency problems that they may have. We've, we've conducted over forty peer support group sessions. Our peer support groups are our most popular meetings, which we host up to twenty participants on Wednesday evenings at one o'clock to two, two o'clock via Zoom. Before, before COVID had hit, we were meeting at the library, at the downtown library, excuse me. Peer support is a setting that we try to create a safe zone for our participants to share barriers that they come across when they're released. And also as a platform to share information and resources to those in need. We get to familiarize ourselves with our participants when we're in our peer support groups and get to hear of stories that are resilient and very empowering. We also have mindfulness Monday groups, which are on Mondays at one PM to two PM. And they're pretty similar to our peer support groups. Mindfulness Monday meetings are another source of support that are growing rapidly now too. This meeting usually is hosted by Shadé Gilliam. And mindfulness Mondays are geared to be intentional in our thinking and to motivate us to be mindful of our focus in our everyday life. Before, also before COVID, we were going into the jail and facilitating RAP, which is a Wellness Recovery Action Plan. And what we do with that is help those that are in reentry and getting ready to come into the community. We help them devise a plan. And we also held a women's peer support groups on Fridays. So we have a lot of peer recovery services here with Home to Hope. And next, I would like to pass it off to my colleague, Shadé Gilliam. And he can tell you more about supportive services.
Good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor. So as you all can see, we have the fifty-three thousand there in the middle. And I'd like to kind of take some time to kind of break down what we do and how we provide our supportive services. Supporter services through Home to Hope are meant to be temporary transitional assistance for people who to help them get on their feet as they enter the, enter the program. We decide and we assess our participants as they come in during our ground zero phase to then assess their needs. If a participant does identify a need that they have, we, we meet those needs through our supportive services. We do so in a very detailed process. The process would go for, would go for the participant is a very simple request if they have any type of need. Because we don't want to put any barriers in front of our participants. We want to make it hassle-free for those who are in need, especially during this time of crisis. So that participant will, will request a need or identify a need that they have. And then we will address that need by way of presenting a supportive service form and presenting it to our supervisors. And then once we're approved of that, we will then meet that need for our participant. If it is a basic need such as toiletries, how, household supplies, work uniforms, things of that nature. We have, to date, have allotted over a hundred and ninety-two gift cards, thirty-dollar gift cards, which we have through Kroger, Walmart, Goodwill, and we also provide transportation services through Exxon, providing gas cards for our participants as well. We're not just giving those gift cards out. We, before COVID hit, we were meeting our participants at every location to then make the purchase and we would then keep hold of the gift card and the receipts for tracking purposes and to be booked. But since COVID and having to restructure how we move a little bit, we have each one of us, whenever our participant has identified a need, myself and my colleagues, we will go out to those places, make the purchases for our participants and then practice safe social distancing by dropping and delivering off those purchases to the client's place of dwelling. So a little bit more of that, in the supportive services, we also, I said, we've made deliveries. But then we also want to note that not only how we administered over a hundred and ninety-two gift cards to Kroger, Walmart, Goodwill, and Exxon for basic necessities, but we have also made over forty-one payments for housing assistance, both pre-COVID and now in the midst of COVID, car repairs and private transportation. To give us kind of exact numbers of what we're looking at here, for housing, we've spent over twenty-nine thousand dollars for housing assistance. For transportation services, we've spent over six thousand dollars for transportation and close to fifteen hundred dollars on employment items such as work uniforms for our participants who are gaining employment through Home to Hope. We've also issued out around seventy-three, thirty, thirty-day bus passes to cat transit for our participants. These are primarily for individuals who have just came, just been released to the community and have no means of transportation. We provide them a thirty-day bus pass to, to help them get around and also to aid them in their job search and housing searches. We've also helped over forty-one people secure jobs. And out of those forty-one people that secured jobs, we've been through the process with them. We are taking them to interviews. We have done applications for individuals who needed a little assistance with computer literacy. And we're also helping and advocating in our community for more partnerships within the community for those participants for further employment. And then lastly, we've helped over forty people secure housing through our, through Home to Hope. So though we are positioned with Office of Economic Development, we've, we started navigating the housing somewhat. And we've helped over forty of our participants secure housing. And to kind of talk more about housing, I'd like to just pass this time off to my colleague, Daryl Simpson.
Thank you, Shadé. And thanks to council for inviting us to share the success of the Home to Hope program. As evidenced tonight, one of the most critical impacts on the pandemic has been on housing. Millions of jobs have lost, have left homeowners and renters in dire straits. Although moratoriums on evictions and other protections have been provided, countless families are left asking how they keep a roof over their head. In response to this crisis, Charlottesville's Office of Economic Development has been charged with administering tenant-based housing relief funds under the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund. The Charlottesville Housing Relief Fund launched on July thirteenth. And to date, we have processed over seven hundred and sixty applications from city residents. At this time, fifty-seven Home to Hope clients are enrolled to receive assistance through this funding under one of three programs. Over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars has been committed to Home to Hope participants. And more than sixty thousand dollars has been dispersed in assistance to those in need. Now to speak a little bit about Home to Hope's community partnerships, the incomparable Stacy Washington.
Thank you, Daryl. I also want to express my gratitude to City Council and Mayor Walker for the opportunity to present today. My name is Stacy Washington. I'm one of the four peer navigators with the Home to Hope program. I would like to share with you all some of our partners. Our program started working with ACRJ at almost the beginning of the pandemic and has expanded our partnership since then. Wait, let me back up. We actually started working with ACRJ at the beginning of this initiative. And we started helping them with HEI at the beginning of the pandemic. As my colleague Whitmore shared himself and Shadé were facilitating RAP. And the men, to the men and myself and Ramonda were facilitating the Home to Hope Women's Support Group inside the facility. The fact, due to COVID nineteen, all visitors and all visitors have been suspended until spring twenty twenty. We've been working closely with ACRJ Work Release Staff, who handles the HEI program. This, this is home electronic incarceration. HEI is a GPS tracking monitor that is secured around your ankle by the Work Release Day. It allows them to monitor your location at all times and will send a signal if you leave out of your allowed perimeter. It allows you to serve your active sentence or bond at your residence. Since COVID, HEI releases have increased significantly. And Home to Hope has played a major role in assisting with these releases. Since partnering with ACRJ, we've assisted with seventeen HEI releases and six of our participants have successfully completed the HEI program. Their success is due to securing housing by obtaining Their success is due to securing housing by obtaining the lease agreements and collaborating with the Work Release Staff to get the lease agreement signed and the purchasing of cell phones so that the Work Release Staff can monitor and contact the participants. Home to Hope works very closely with the Oxford House as well. They've been phenomenal partners and have housed and still housed several of our participants. They have three men's houses and one women's house. The Haven is another partner that we work with. And a lot of our participants, participants utilize that. There is also a service within the Haven that has helped one of our participants. They were able to pay the security deposit and we paid the rent for, for a place he was approved for. We also have a community partners program. We've partnered with several local businesses in the area. And they've agreed to hire several of our participants. They are DTR Construction, Timberwood Tap House, Abrahma Heating and Air, and Panera Bread. We've also partnered with two local barber shops owned and operated by gentlemen with lived experience, a Cut Above and JJ's Barber Shop. They have donated time and services to newly released participants and participants that have job interviews and will be going through our Suited for Success Program in partnership with Belmont Clothing Closet. We also worked with the Felton Fund and our Home to Hope graduate, Martez Tobler, who has referred several of his clients to us, as well as assisted several of our participants with financial services. Hope Starts Here was an initiative of ours that was hosted by Shadi and Whitmore Merrick. It was a two-part virtual event with the first part focusing on housing barriers and the second on entrepreneurship. Part of Minority Business Month, the participants were people with lived experience and both had great turnouts. When the pandemic first started, we had two events at CAT where we gave away COVID care bags to our participants in need of food. We also kept a food pantry throughout the pandemic until the jobs in the reopen mid-August. This worked great and we practiced social distancing and wore P P E at both events. Home to Hope works. The numbers show, according to criminal justice planner Neil Goodlow. The slides never moved, I guess. I'm sorry.
Did you want me to move it?
Yes, I just kept reading, I guess. And we never moved the slides. I'm sorry, council.
That's okay. Am I on the right slide now?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Wheeler. I was supposed to tell you to go. So we're at the right slide. According to criminal justice planner Neil Goodlow, ACRJ reported a return to custody rate of around forty percent. This is in stark contrast to the Home to Hope program that has seen a four-point-two return of custody rate. The numbers don't lie. It's just, it's been just a year and there's still more work to do. I can assure you, Home to Hope is here and ready to do just that. And to tell you about what we have planned, I'll pass it. And to tell you about some of our success stories, I'm going to pass it to my colleague, Ramonda Jackson.
Well, I'm back. And yes, we're on the right slide. So this is one of our participants by the name of Norman Bell. And he came to us about a year after his release. When we first conversated, he said that he'd been trying to find us because he heard about Home to Hope. But it was funny to him and quite surprising to him that Stacy and I was a part of this initiative because being that we do have lived experience, we have lived experience. And Norman happened to be part of that lived experience as well because we knew him. So he found it kind of funny and we did chuckle a little bit about the fact that Stacy and I was doing this. But after that just small moment of laughter, he kind of got really serious. And he said, I've been really looking for y'all because I really need a job. Like, he got serious like really quick. He said he really needed a job. And he wanted something that would pay him kind of what he's worth. You know, a good pay and a job that could be somewhat of a career. And he went on and on and on about wanting a job and a career. And so the more he talked about it and the more I seen how eager he was at the mere mention of work and how adamant he was about not going back to jail and not going back to the streets, I immediately thought about our collaboration with LEAP. And I told him about the collaboration, how we were embarking with LEAP. And I explained to him that LEAP was willing to house an individual rent-free for three to four months and train them in the HVAC field at a rate of fifteen dollars an hour for training. And hopefully have that individual on full-time at the end of the training with a possible pay increase once hired. By the time I finished explaining all of this, Norman said, and I quote, "Man, sign me up. Where can I, where can I start?" And so I had to slow him down a little bit. And I said, well, there is a process and there's an interview process. I said, we'll do the, we'll do the application and get you ready for interviews. So he had three separate interviews. And he, he came in saying that he wanted a job and a career and that he was willing to do whatever it took, and he did just that. He sold himself in the interviews. And he then became our first participant in this collaboration. We furnished the apartment ourselves and LEAP. And he's been living there since the second week of July. And he has currently finished that training. And he is now a full-time employee for LEAP. And we are so very proud of him. And every time I talk to him, he's thanking us and saying how much he loves his job. Every time I talk to him, he says, "I love my job. I love this opportunity. I'm so grateful to Home to Hope." I mean, we got to get more people in. And I know this guy that just got out. So we're always conversating and he's just really happy. And I'm so very proud of him. I mean, to know from where he came from, and myself as well, to know where we came from and to know that he's doing this now. He has a full-time job. He's now looking for housing because he was approved for the Housing Relief Fund as well. I'm just, I'm floored. I'm just floored that this opportunity he has gotten. And he said, "Just keep changing lives." And that's exactly what we plan to do. And there's another success story that I'd like to pass, pass this opportunity over to Shadi Gilliam so he can talk about one of his participants.
Thank you, Ramonda. Back again to the council. So as you see, the woman on the PowerPoint is Amber Levens. Amber Levens came to Home to Hope fresh out of, well, I'm sorry. She was released from ACRJ on HEI. She was released to a one-bedroom apartment, one-bedroom unit that was her sister's but was approved through HEI. So she did not have her own living space. She was not working. And she was fighting hard to be back in her son's life. You see one of her sons in the picture with her. Amber came to Home to Hope really, really concerned about her relapsing and not knowing where she could turn to for support. Immediately, Amber and I, we hit the ground running. Amber identified work needs. We addressed those needs together. She was gainfully employed with McDonald's. And today, she is now a manager at McDonald's. She's moved up the ranks pretty fast there. Amber is one of our most dedicated and responsible peer support group attendees. Though she's required to only come to two meetings a month, she shows up to every meeting every week and is very instrumental and vocal about her success with Home to Hope. Amber also was approved of the Housing Relief Fund, where we were able to find and secure housing for Amber, where she now has her own space, her own living space, where she can come and go if she please. And she can have her sons there with her, which is the most important part. Amber also has completed her time on HEI with no offenses. She is now actively two years clean. She was a year, she was a little bit close to over a year when she came to the program. And she was concerned about her, about relapsing due to being released on HEI. But she has maintained a sobriety and she's very thankful for Home to Hope. We've assisted Amber through supportive services with furnishing her apartment and providing her with gift cards and supportive services through her time with Home to Hope as she's requested. And she's thriving right now in our community. And she's very excited about giving back to the community and continuing to partner with us at Home to Hope. And to get to another success story we have, I'd like to pass it off to Whitmore Merrick.
Thanks, Shadi. I'd like to talk about, you hear me? I'd like to talk about Carol Dyke's success story. I met Carol Dyke as I sat in on drug court at O A R. We had seen each other while I was driving as a driver at CAT, Charlottesville Area Transit. So when he saw me working there, he was very curious of what I was doing. So I explained the program. And from that day, we began his road to resiliency. Carol started attending our peer support groups faithfully and stayed in constant contact. He expressed his struggles at drug court, but he continued to stay focused as I watched him graduate via Zoom and congratulated him. Prior to that, he had restitution that had him buried in debt. And we were able to help him reduce, reduce that to half and kind of make it so that he could see the light at the end. Also, also Carol Dyke expressed to us that he always wanted to give back. And when, when he expressed to me that he had the opportunity to become a peer navigator and get the training, I definitely encouraged him to do so. And not only did we encourage him, we also helped him find employment after his employer let him go because of what he wanted to pursue. So now Carol is off of drug court. He'll be off of probation soon. And we've also helped him with housing. He's also got volunteer hours with us at, at Home to Hope. So we were very, very happy that we were able to help him give back what she was very passionate about. And with that said, I'd like to pass it on to my colleague, Roy Fitch, to let you know what's next for Home to Hope.
So what's next for Home to Hope? And please advance the slide. Okay, so first off, one of our future plans is self-odyssey. So this is a training program that will be for women who are recently released and will integrate peer recovery services and workforce development. So basically, Ramonda and Stacy started some of this work at ACRJ prior to COVID-19. So because of the popularity of their support group there and with this opportunity to put some funding in place, they'll get an opportunity to work more in depth with the women that are released from incarceration and just help them to grow and develop as best they can once they reintegrate into society. In the jail, the women don't get enough programming, so this will be a great opportunity for them. And it was alluded to earlier that thirty-four percent of our participation pool are female. So even though that's a smaller number than the male participants, they're equally as important. So that'll be a great opportunity for them. Peer training. We'll continue to do peer training alongside the peers that we serve. The perfect example of that is Carol Dyke. He took it upon himself to go out and seek peer training so that he can get into a similar field and play a similar role amongst the community members that he's associated with. So this will be a great opportunity for him to work with us and get the volunteer hours that he's required to get so that he can become certified as a peer trainer. And we're excited about him being a part of our office and maneuvering around the office and getting some real-life experience and some hours in. We already spoke earlier about the partnerships and the community engagement. So we'll continue to be engaged in the community and continue to work on the partnerships that already are existing. And we'll also continue to seek out new partnerships as well. A lot of the partners that we work with and we have really strong relationships with, they were already mentioned. But a few that I wanted to mention that you may not have saw or that were not mentioned were, well, ACRJ, we can't say enough about them. But I did want to share Georgia's Healing House. I wanted to also mention LEAP. Norman Bell was mentioned and his name was brought up when we talked about LEAP and the partnership that we've developed with them. Red Light Management. Also, the Police Department C I T team, they have been great. It's been really awesome to attend their meetings monthly and just have them as another asset that we can continue to strengthen that bond and also share with our participants that we work with. And then also, we can't forget the Drug Court and Therapeutic Docket. So those have also been some really great partners that we've developed bonds with and relationships with in addition to the partners that were listed before. Also, we want to continue to grow as a program. So what I wanted to share concerning that is that caseloads have increased since July alone. Caseloads have increased thirty percent. So that's program, program-wide. So thirty percent since July. And then we did not let up in, as far as our service delivery during the pandemic. So since March, we've honestly been working at the same rate and the same pace, if not more, and, and providing the same services that we provided prior to COVID-19 hitting. And then also, we want to consistently serve the community that we live in. So you know, the number of, the numbers that you see, it doesn't really attest to the fact that we have so many different people that our peer support navigators come into contact with, that the need is definitely there for us to eventually add another staff member so that, so that we can really develop this program and really touch all the different areas of the city that we possibly can. So that'll be a must for us in the near future is to eventually figure out how we can add another staff member on our team and in our office so that we can really take things to the next level. Next slide, please. So, so what we have here is a video. And it will share some of the experiences of some of the participants. And it'll also reflect on some of the relationships that the peer support navigators have developed with these participants.
If you give me a second, I'm going to switch gears here. And see if I can bring up the video. This will be a first. Never shown a live video on our Zoom. And if I could get some heads nodding if you see and hear things.
I see and hear it, Brian.
Great.
The volume could be a little bit louder.
Well, see if I can refresh that.
Brian, are you able to turn that up some?
Afraid not.
I didn't even want to be president. I was just, I was just trying to get my life together and ended up starting helping more people. So to my experiences that I went through and the pain and stuff that I went through to help other people with it, man, it's, it's a blessing more than I could ever ask for.
She's awesome. She's doing a lot of great things. She's come a long way and I'm really proud of her. Uh, when I was formerly incarcerated, um, me and Bobby get some time together. So I know a lot about her struggles. She knows a lot about my struggles. Um, and we came back together, um, at the Home to Hope Women's, um, Support Group over at ACRJ. And when I walked in and I saw her, instant bond and I just said, you, you gotta, you gotta, I need you in Home to Hope. Like this is for you. She said, if you can do it Stacy, I can do it. And I said, I got you. Home to Hope got you. Um, we all, we all have lived experience and we're out there making moves. And we gonna help you. We gonna walk it out with you. And she did just that and here she stands. And I'm a full-time employee now. Um, I'm still drug free as I'm five months. Five months, clean and sober. It's been hard. It is really, really hard, but it can be done. And I have the support of Stacy, the Home to Hope program, um, my drug court program as well. Um, I still have my struggles, but you know, when I do have them struggles, Stacy's always there. I can pick that phone up. Stacy, look, this is how I feel. I need some help. You know, even when I was down on my luck and I didn't have my job and my rent was going, kept going up, kept going up. You know, I contacted Stacy and they provided me with that service to get me back down to where I could control it now. With our program, we know how it is. We've all been there before. So we just want you all to know that, um, with Home to Hope, the one word that stands out to us is hope. So there is hope. So just come see us. Come holler at us. We still here. We not going nowhere. One love, one color. We are the same. We love everybody. So, Home to Hope. We love.
And thank you all for, um, that presentation and counsel. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
No. No questions, but I think, um, thank you all for the presentation. I think the, the, the numbers don't lie. Um, it is pretty remarkable, um, both in the numbers and the specific success stories. You know, hearing the presentation just made me think about, you know, I know we've had a lot of conversations about what it means to divest from the criminal justice system and invest in the community and community support. And I know, you know, for us as council, one of the big challenges is how do we move from that big idea to reality? And I think this kind of program is exactly what that means in reality. And I think just hearing the presentation just makes me think about how, you know, doing that requires building something new and building something new is obviously extremely difficult. It takes time, resources. Um, but I think the work that you all are doing is exactly what it looks like and means in reality. And shows that while it's difficult, it can be done. And I know, you know, there's a lot of focus on things that go wrong, especially, you know, in the social media age in the city. But I think this is an example, one of the really exciting things that is changing and is making a positive impact. Um, and I just think it's, uh, you know, this is kind of a, a seed of what it may mean to build alternative systems. And I hope it's something that we, as city council and city government can continue to cultivate and grow that. But it's really incredible what you all are doing. So thank you.
I do have one question. I'm curious, did, do you have sort of like a, a course or a curriculum that participants go through? Or is it just a matter of you're working with them with whatever they need, whenever they need it?
So I can just speak up, but I would like the navigators to really, um, chime in here. Um, I would say that because each individual has their own, um, own direction and pathway that they're on, it is very customized. Um, as Whitmore mentioned, uh, with the peer recovery, um, support groups, we do have those and those are open to everyone. And they can come and, you know, have the conversations and hear the same, um, you know, the thoughts and the feedback and things like that. But, um, the idea here is that we're treating each individual as an individual and meeting their needs, um, that they have as, you know, um, on a whole. So we're not just like, you know, working on one piece and someone else has another. Um, it's really, we're looking at the whole individual and really customizing the services that we offer to them.
Um, I would just say that we don't necessarily have a curriculum, but we do have RAP, which we've, we facilitate. And, um, that's a wellness, a wellness recovery action plan. And, um, that's the closest thing that we have to a curriculum. We're not experts on this and, but we do believe that we're all experts on ourselves and know what's best for ourselves.
I'm not saying that you need to have a curriculum. I'm just kind of curious about it. So is there a point where you say, okay, you know, our work with you is done. You've graduated or is it more just kind of, you're keeping working with them and you're going to keep helping them and be part of a community together?
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Um.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so yes, we, um, we do have a structured tier, um, where Ramona alluded to where we start them off as ground level. Then they can go, um, they can, um, graduate all the way up to thriving. And in the thriving tier, um, we believe that we have an open door policy. Um, once a participant is thriving, they've shown the abilities to be self-sustaining. And, um, they're, they've, they've, uh, we've answered the housing issue. They, they, they've secured employment, gainful employment. Um, and we are providing them with tools to be, um, productive citizens in the community. Um, at that point, um, this people would not necessarily be required to, um, maintain the, um, same requirements as a participant's coming in on ground, ground level. Um, but we, we're never in a place where we're graduating our participants out of the program. Um, but because we know that things can happen where, you know, even if a participant is thriving, they might run into something like COVID-19 where they need some type of extra assistance. And when things get hard and things happen, um, that they weren't prepared for.
And I realize you all have only been in existence for a year or so. Yeah. It's great. Thank you.
Very impressive in what you have been able to accomplish in only a year, especially when you've also thrown COVID-19 into such a large part of it. Um, it's, it's really incredible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you all for your time and it was just really wonderful to hear all through your voices and the experience that it's been for you in addition to those that you're serving. And, um, just want to thank you all for your leadership here and obviously Mayor Walker for her leadership and planting the seeds. And, um, just really looking forward to what you all will do as this grows in the, in the years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just close out. Thank you all for, um, staying up until Tuesday with us. Um, everyone, um, here, I mean, Roy and Daryl, thank you for all the support that you all offer. Holly, you know, as I state all the time, able to take, um, you know, just small pieces of information I throw out there. Um, and make it come to life and, um, along with the team. And in terms of, um, the, the core team, you all are, um, taking, um, something that a lot of people didn't think were possible to start something without having, um, everything in place, everything decided. Um, and to take a blank canvas and own it from start to where it is now with, um, the full understanding. I mean, our last conversation and every conversation, and that's one thing I, I thought when you all was, um, and now I'm getting off track, but I thought when you all were talking, um, what you all just presented and what you all are doing is amazing. But when we're talking, you're often talking about what you can do better and what you can do more of. And I just want people to, um, you know, just understand that. And even when, um, COVID-19 threw kind of a wrench in where we were going. Um, and you had to, um, change course. You all were able, um, to change course with, with, uh, with little effort. And so I appreciate everything that, um, the four of you are doing to bring this to life. Um, that you continue to invest, um, your energy. And I hope, the, the main thing that I hope that, um, everyone watching this now and that will watch this in the future understand that you all are the people that not only this community, but other communities across, um, this country usually write off and say that you can't do it, won't be able to do it. And that not only are you doing it in such a short period of time with not a pre-programmed, you know, um, handed to you, initiative handed to you. But with me sitting at the table from the very beginning with the individuals who were at that table. And then every time that I speak to you all, asking you all what you all are creating, what you all need to, you know, to create, what people in the community need, um, from you all. And, um, that you all take just those prompts and that you have made what, um, everyone has seen here tonight. And, um, I just hope people understand that if we do more of that, we end up on the right, um, path. Um, and that is the community, hopefully, that all of us are staying that we want to, to create. So I appreciate you, but you all already know that. And, um, just continue to do what you do. I tell them all the time that a lot of times they walk into the rooms and they're walking into the rooms, people who think that they know everything. And I tell them to take what they need and leave the rest and don't become a part of a system because they are being introduced into a system that did not, they know them well and that doesn't serve a lot of people well. And I like how Holly has, um, integrated that with her staff. And that, um, the job center staff has come on to help support, um, and guide, uh, the Home to Hope staff and that is just one, um, like one family. And that that has worked out, um, that has worked out well too. And they complement each other. And I don't even know if you really can tell the difference most days, but I appreciate everything that all you, all of you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thanks.
Right. Thanks to the whole council. Appreciate all you all's kind words.
All right. I guess morning, hopefully. All right.
You all have a good morning.
Was there somebody saying something? Okay.
Mayor Walker, I just wanted to add that, um, you know, I think too often in our society, there is a, uh, a scar of cynicism about just the, the inability that public dollars in the public sector can't innovate. They can't actually solve problems. And it, the, these folks are examples and exemplars that in fact, public dollars can go to good and that our society can get better. And it's just refreshing to see that from a city government perspective.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, um, for that. I worked myself out of a lot of jobs as you all know and hear me often say, oh, I worked there. I was there. And oftentimes when I was in those rooms, I often just said, if we just listen to the people who've been impacted, negatively affected, if we just let them lead, um, we would be in a much different space. And I hope that Home to Hope can, um, you know, prove that it's worth taking that chance and that you don't have to, um, you know, know everything upfront, that some things just progress like life does. Um, you know, you just, as you continue, you grow. Okay. Next up, we have, um, and, oh, update for me, the Imagine Jesseville Working Group. And the only date that I have at this point is that we are, um, the, the, the mem, the number of individuals, um, it's, it's slightly more. And that was, um, you know, intentional after talking to, um, individuals who I thought, um, would be, uh, you know, good for this group. And the more people I talked to, and then some people, you know, called back and who originally said that they wouldn't be able to. So instead of taking another person off, I just, um, kept them both there. And so I hope that's, doesn't present to be, to be an issue. But we're at, um, 21 people for this at this time. And we haven't scheduled the first meeting because we're still, um, waiting on, um, the scheduling for 21 people. Is presenting to be a major, um, challenge. But right now it's, um, I'll be, you know, on the imagining of Jesseville, his imagining Jesseville Working Group. Um, Counselor Payne has switched out with Counselor Hill. So Counselor Payne will be on this, um, working group with me. Um, Chief Brackney, um, Kakidemic, um, Joe Platania, Harold Foley, Jeff Fogel, Neil Goodlow. Mr. Blair will be, um, a part of the group. Um, Janice Redinger, um, Cherry Henley. Um, we originally talked about, um, Ramonda, who you just heard from Jackson being a part of it. But just through, due to scheduling ish, um, issues that Stacy Washington, who you also just heard from Stacy, will be a part of, um, the group and Whitmore. So two of the Home to Hope staff members will be participating. Um, Joy Johnson will be a member of this working group. Kalisha Powell, who is a, um, resident at South First Street. Um, Martez Tolbert, who was just mentioned as one of the train, that participated in the trainings, um, a year ago and was hired for the Fountain Fund. Um, Nicholas, um, Fagan, who's a city resident, um, I think will be instrumental. A lot of the, um, initiatives he does, um, with the public. And, um, he spent some time, he, um, I don't think you'll mind me telling the story, but after we talked about it, um, him participating, he sent me a message the next morning and said, I had a dream. I was back at Rikers after talking to you. And I'm like, your spirit is too free for Rikers. So, but he does a lot of work in the community. Um, he'll be instrumental in helping us to pull even more, um, you know, get a lot of engagement from the community. Um, when we talk about what the, the community needs are. And, um, Herb Dickerson, um, Jay James has agreed to be on there. Um, Tasha Smith will be a part of the working group. I will disclose that Tasha. I will disclose that Tasha is a family member of mine. She is a first cousin. Um, so I know that someone will share that with you. Um, she's been wanting to be engaged in, um, a lot of this work, um, with me. And, um, I was hesitant because we are family, but I think the scope of this, um, you know, she'll be fine in it. Um, and she spent, uh, considerable, um, from 1997 to 2011. If you often hear me share that story of a cousin who's just a year older than me, um, spending time in federal prison, um, being sentenced at the age of 18, um, arrested in Charlottesville, that's her. And so she'll bring a, a perspective that will help with the work that we're doing. And, um, final participant is Jordy Yeager. And, um, again, we had asked, um, we had discussed bringing something to council by the second meeting in November. And if that date changes, um, to have something to present based on the scheduling, um, conflicts that we're having at this point, I will, um, let council know. Are there any questions? Okay. All right. Well, that's it for my update. Um, any other business?
Just want to remind council that we have our work, our work session tomorrow and, um, just to go over any materials that might be relevant to that as we prepare for that conversation tomorrow.
Please review. And the only other thing, and I meant to make this announcement early or in the, during the announcement period that we would, um, be discussing this. Um, but over the last month, um, I have been, um, trying to get information about, um, temporary employees, um, who have been, um, laid off from the city. And, um, I think it's, um, the numbers are around about 400 people who are now no longer employed and they worked, um, you know, in different capacities and hours. And I just, um, thought it was very important for us to have this conversation, um, publicly. Council, um, members, um, agreed, um, the ones that I talked to, uh, about that and have been really engaged also, um, for the past couple of weeks and, um, attempting to remedy and, um, this issue. And, um, and so we're going to have a, um, discussion on our next meeting. Is it the next meeting? Yes. About, um, about the issue and, um, and have a more broad public discussion about it. Any other counselor have any comments? All right. So next up, any other business? All right. So matters, um, by the public, we're at the second matters by the public. Um, Mr. Willer, do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
We have 10 people left in the audience, one of which has raised her hand. Anyone else who'd like to join? Click the raise hand icon on the Zoom webinar. First up is Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you're on the city council.
So I want to go back to the CARES funding. You guys show three different numbers. It's crazy. Why do you keep changing the numbers? Like the mayor, you keep bringing up Parks and Rec. It's only certain parts of Parks and Rec that's actually working right now. Are you bringing it up because you work for Parks and Recs? Are you bringing it up because you got friends that's working for Parks and Recs? Like, why do the numbers keep changing? It's, it's almost like the, the wages, the wage increase. You pay everybody $15 an hour, right? But you got people that's hired today that's going to make $15 an hour. And you got people that have been down the city for X amount of years that just went up to 15 now. Like, it doesn't make, do y'all understand money? Cause it just doesn't make sense. So somebody that works three days a week should get the same amount of hazard pay as somebody that's worked overtime, that's worked these protests, that's worked. It does, like, none of this makes sense to me. And then I like mayor, cause see, I want to point out this personal stuff. I just admitted more than like three times, personal things. You brought up Conscious Capital Group. Well, those are the same people that did the event at Juneteenth that agreed to pay the fine and then they went back saying, oh, no, we don't want to pay the fine now. Even though they agreed to pay the fine, you didn't make a big deal out of them with their protest, but other people got a lot of heat or slack about their protest. Like the personal stuff, I, I can't get away from this personal stuff and I'm going to stay on it. I'm going to stay on y'all necks because I know that a lot of stuff is just personal down there. It's personal. It's personal. It's interconnecting, friends of friends, helping friends, you know? Yeah, I just recently heard, have you the reason why Paul sitting in the city managers, the assistant city manager, right? You helped get him that job, right? See, it's such a connection with everything here in Charlottesville. You gotta know the right people to get the right things. It's all starting to make sense now. But it's just, it's crazy that everybody on council, y'all just be allowing this stuff to happen and nothing against Home to Hope, they doing great work. Absolutely. Great work. Yes. But why are they making $18 an hour and people in this city making 15? Like, you gotta explain that to people because when your employees are complaining that they are not making the money that they should and they've given you years of service, but then you swipe right in and pay somebody more. That's disrespectful. That's disrespect. Like, you can't treat people like that. Then we talk about being transparent. We talk about being open and honest. We want change. We want to do this better. We want to do that. And y'all doing the same stuff, the same stuff. But then you act like it's right. And nobody challenges the mayor. She talked 50 minutes a night. 50 minutes, this meeting could have been over two hours ago.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Just like to point out just for, um, the public, um, that, that, um, Home to Hope staff wages, um, was part of the initial discussion. I have advocated for a base wage, which we were calling living wage, but we know that that is not sufficient. Um, and the complaints that were coming, um, in based on everything that you just heard, um, from them, that their salary should have only been, um, $15 or that some people in the city shouldn't have even been making $15. Um, and that they didn't have degrees, which they don't have, and, um, you know, et cetera. So when those complaints started flowing, which I've heard some of them from, um, management too, and I'm sure that Ms. Hudson got her information from the same place. It is important for us to also understand that if we're going to do initiatives like these, that we're not going to base the requirements, um, for staff members who have the lived experience, who can clearly do the work on, um, requirements that are usually placed upon people, um, that you can only do this work if you have a bachelor's, if you can only do this work if you have a master's, if you only can do this work if you have a PhD. And it's just something to keep in mind when we move towards a better model. Um, and so that's, I think, the only comment that, um, that I'll share about that.
There are no other hands raised. Mayor Walker?
All right. Council, any other comments? All right. Have a good night. Me and the.
Night.
Tomorrow.